All right, we'll, uh, we'll start today's meeting. Very good. Welcome, everybody. Full house today. That's always fun to see. So this meeting is now called to order. This is the regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of the Town of Waxaw, November fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. So first, um, item on ours is our ceremonial opening. So if you would all please rise, those who are seated, and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance, and then remain standing for just a brief moment of silence.
(inaudible) United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, one God, and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, you may be seated. Thank you very much. All right, I think, uh, at this point, we have the adoption of the agenda tonight. I understand that I have a request from the town manager.
Uh, yes, Mayor, thank you. Request to add agenda, uh, in section G one, Presentations. Mayor Pro Tem Brendan McMillan.
Okay, G one. Very good. All right, so can I have a motion, please, then?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Very good. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Very good. All right, we have a number of people tonight to sign up under the general comments. We normally, uh, allow only fifteen minutes for that, but we have a few people. Uh, the time limit on that speaking is three minutes each, if you would. If there is some consolidation, so I see a lot of people on here, uh, may or may not want to talk about the same thing. So if some of you know each other and can consolidate, that'd be great. Otherwise, I'm still, uh, gonna have it open for, uh, three minutes each. So at this point in time, general public comments, Neil Gaiman. So if you'd come up, tell us who you are, whether you're a resident or not.
Neil Gaiman, uh, I am not a resident. However, I own a business in Waxaw and have very, very good reasons for this. Mayor, council, staff, I'm the owner of the Dream Chasers Brewery, and I'm here representing several businesses in downtown Waxaw to show our support for the social district. The three social district tests that were done over the past couple of months were very successful and brought more people not only to our businesses, but also to other businesses in downtown. Add to that the changes that were done around our corner with all the seating, this would be something that would be most beneficial. There are over forty other towns and cities that have enacted social districts very successfully. Monroe's dead downtown is no longer thanks to the social district there that they have. I know that there are a lot of people here that are not in favor of the social district being available all the time. I've heard people talking about all the problems that could possibly bring and not being child-friendly. We are still a place for families to come. What the social district will be is a huge step for the continuing economic vitality of downtown. I urge the council to approve the legislation. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Rick Kraus. You wanna come up and, uh, identify yourself, and you got three minutes.
Okay, thank you. I'm Rick Kraus. I am a resident of Waxaw. Um, and I wanted to say, first of all, thank you to the Mayor Pappas and to Commissioners, um, Morey and Simpson, uh, for the service that you've provided to our community. Um, and also to, uh, say congratulations and best wishes to the incoming mayor and, uh, new commissioners. Um, I expect that the newly constituted team of old and new, uh, commissioners and mayor will continue to, or will demonstrate that, uh, continuity, empathy, and open-mindedness will conquer animus and ideology, uh, in your collective pursuit of finding practical solutions to the, some of the divisive challenges that lay ahead. Uh, I also fully support, um, the so-called blame duck group. Um, continue to execute your portfolio, uh, in the best way that you see fit, um, for the balance of your terms for which you were elected. Um, notwithstanding that, I also wanted to, or I wanted to, um, urge caution, uh, in establishing a permanent social district without first collecting some additional information and sharing that information, including things like official impact statements, uh, from, uh, the public safety and service departments in Town of Waxaw, uh, and, uh, raw and summarized results of targeted surveys of proximate businesses and residences. Uh, maybe with a response threshold like you do for if you're just putting in a speed cushion on a street, you need to get a certain number of residents responding, uh, and, and then figure that you can make a decision based on that input. Uh, and, um, uh, personally, I actually love the idea of social districts, but I do think it makes sense, uh, to make sure that, uh, all of our residents and businesses that will be directly affected, uh, have a chance to, uh, weigh in. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Rick. All right, looks like I have a Chris. Is it Decoy? Decay?
Uh, Dacey.
Dacey. Okay, there we go.
Poor Penman.
All right.
All right. Uh, I'll skip the formalities and jump right into it, if I may. Um, so my comments are just general comments about new developments, neighborhoods, traffic, et cetera. So here we go. I'm wound up. Um, as the plans for Adelina were developed, I'm certain there were countless hard stops and were blinking red lights along the way that needed to be addressed. I am thankful that the town employs or hires such a professionally diverse pool of experts to address these issues with the intent to keep us safe. Across all projects, we have seen a masterful demonstration of professional and technical proficiency, ensuring the appropriate number of inlets, traffic lights, vehicle storage, and even a double U-turn, all appropriately in place. I can't even think of where the nearest double U-turn is, but that won't be a problem. There will be one right here at the front door of Waxaw. Double U-turn, come on. All of this to accommodate nearly five hundred houses, units, I think retail, um, that we don't need, that we don't want. Nobody's asking for that. In the previously prevented traffic studies, note, note the intersection grades at Adelina's main entrance. It falls by two letter grades, as does the nearby intersection. I believe one is an A to a C and a C to an E. That is not better. That is not better. Okay? That is profit for them and a Band-Aid for us. That's not better. Additionally, in the previous, um, I'm gonna kill this one, Amavi, uh, in previous meetings, Amavi, which isn't even built, has been presented as relief for Adelina, similar to how Inverness on Providence initially was, where I live. Um, it will serve as the third inlet, keeping that roof count as high as possible. Third inlet, keeping that roof, roof count as high as possible. It's not even their neighborhood. It's not even their neighborhood, and it's fluffing them up. Not okay. This community has been diminished to nothing more than an obstacle, a service road where drivers will move with as much efficiently as, efficiency as possible, on autopilot, as they engage their final destination. Amavi should have no part, or Ambi should have no part in Adelina's equation. No access, no roof count, period. We all understand that you cannot control what goes up for sale. However, our elected officials are not, are meant to serve and protect our way of life. Approving the installation of a five-hundred-unit development is akin to placing a grenade in the mouth of Waxaw and pulling the pin, dressing up the aftermath with flashy red, yellow, and green lines. The improvements won't matter, though. We still won't be getting anywhere. The traffic forecast is bleak, as you've shown us. Um, the current citizens of Taxar are getting ahead. The taxman and Shay Holmes are, and it's not, it's not acceptable to me. Clearing and cramming for profit is a standard available for application anywhere. Why is this being chosen as Waxaw standard within city limits?
That was the buzzer, but if you wanna finish your thought?
Yeah, I do. Um, so two more things, if I may. So Waxaw and Union County are rich in many things. There's heart here. If you can call on your community, we can help you accelerate this work without having to sell every square inch of what makes our home special. That's the natural resources. We are rich in baccos and earth movers, and I promise you, folks will show up to move what needs to be moved and string some dang lights because it is the holiday season. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, this one I may butcher because it's hard to. Is it Riddit Geist? Is that it?
Rich.
Okay, now I see it.
Good evening. My name is Rich Geist, and I'm the owner of Waxaw Creamery. I am not a resident here. Uh, let me just start by thanking the board to take the time to hear my concerns pertaining to the upcoming consideration to the social district in the downtown area. After watching the process with the test days, I wish to state my opposition in making this a permanent option. I've also read social media and find it to be exaggerated with statements of high approval of making the downtown area a social district. After hearing and reading subject matter, I decided to speak directly casually to my fellow business owners to see if, in fact, these feelings are accurate. After speaking with businesses, both who sell alcohol and others who don't find it, who don't, finding surprisingly a neutral stance. Actually, the alcohol business seems to have more concerns than the non-alcohol businesses. I did ask the non-alcohol businesses, if a customer with an open container accidentally spills their drink and creates damages to their product, would you consider not allowing open containers back in the store? Their answer was yes. I opened our business ten years ago in Waxaw to provide a quality product to our residents of Waxaw and surrounding areas. With hard work from my family along with other businesses, the downtown area has grown into a vibrant and enjoyable destination for the area. Our businesses have developed a sense of comfort for when someone enters our store, the same sense someone gets when walking around town, whether enjoying ice cream, shopping in stores, or getting dinner and running to the bridge to watch the sight of an upcoming train. During the test, the test days, we as a business chose to opt out and not allow open containers in our store. We didn't feel it fit our business plan and how we want the store to be perceived. That said, we posted signs and added signage provided by the town at the entrance. On both test days, the signage was ignored, and we were forced to post a person at the door to inform customers that no open containers were permitted in the store. The reaction was snide comments and at times, times childish reactions. Any business should not have to deal with some of the daily interactions of unruly customers, but unruly customers that have drink in them is ridiculous. After looking over the ordinance and the operations plan, I have to ask why? Why would a business want to allow customers to leave their business and go somewhere else? Why would a business want to allow a customer who's been drinking elsewhere and assume their liability? At this time, I would like the board to consider meeting with the downtown business owners as a group and hear what everyone has to say, both in favor and those opposed. It would bring a better opportunity for everyone to understand where everyone else stands and can bring light to things many of us may not be aware of. I hope the result makes the downtown area even stronger. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up, Susanna. If you wanna come up, you and Richard, do you wanna combine or you wanna speak individually?
Good evening. My name is Susanna Wedra, and I live in Lawson. Instituting a social district would be the height of disrespect toward the residents who live downtown. Unlike Monroe, whose city centers, it sits far away from the residential area, Waxaw homes are within feet of drinking establishments. The proposed seven-day-a-week social district is an unnecessary extreme and should not be considered as a variable in a supposed compromise. It should be disregarded on its face. Moreover, using two highly advertised events, one being Autumn Treasures, and comparing foot traffic and retail sales to an average Saturday or Sunday, and attributing the increase in foot traffic and sales to people being permitted to consume alcohol outdoors is misleading at best. We deserve better from our government. As the wife of a thirty-year law enforcement officer who presently helps manage a town police department, I know a social district will strain police resources, leaving other parts of the town with less coverage. As Noda attracts people from all over Charlotte, so will Waxaw, but for all the wrong reasons. Claims of no incidents occurring during the two events a social district was tested are inaccurate. Following Autumn Treasures, an individual was arrested for a DWI. A nearby homeowner also relayed that she observed some urinating, someone urinating in public. And speaking of DWIs, how will bartenders monitor and cut off patrons when necessary if customers are bouncing from bar to bar? Also, what stops people from filling their cups outside of a bar, which will result in less business for those establishments? Some of you have very recently stated on social media and at the Millbridge Candidate Forum on November second that more data was needed before deciding on a social district, but we learned from this agenda that the board is in consensus in October, long before you made those statements. That would indicate that you've made up your mind before the necessary data was received, and that's unacceptable. What is needed is more public input. Our children should be able to go to our beautiful park, grab a burger or a taco in town, or sit outside Waxaw Creamery without having a young adult who is actively consuming alcohol sit beside them. Further, what will prevent a twenty-one-year-old from passing alcohol to their teenage friend? This is just my opinion, but I believe that a weekend social district would negatively impact our quality of life. However, it is reasonable for, to have a social di- district during special events at most, being that we already have police resources available. Respectfully, Waxaw is not Noda, nor should it ever be. It should remain the charming, southern, historic, family-friendly town that we either grew up in or fell in love with. Please keep Waxaw Waxaw.
Good evening. I'm, uh, Richard Daunt, resident of Millbridge. Last week, the voters of Waxaw spoke with a loud voice, regardless of the issues of taxes, growth, et cetera. I think the biggest takeaway for all of us is that a large majority don't feel heard or included. That should give all who sit on this board a reason to pause. One of the toughest things for people in general, and elected officials in particular, is staying humble. It's an all-too-human weakness to elevate ourselves and our own thoughts above others, but we can only do important work if we do not become self-important. To be a true public servant, one must be willing to listen and change course when the people speak. In a constitutional republic, one must be a representative, not a ruler. One must also have patience. Government can be messy and slow, often less efficient than the private sector, but that's okay. That's actually a feature, not a bug. The founders of this nation designed separation of powers in order to minimize the danger of a concentrated power that acts too quickly. of a concentrated power that acts too quickly. The monopoly on force that the government has should not be used lightly. Some have lamented that a lot of time and effort is wasted if this board votes down a project that the staff and the planning board have worked hard on. But this is the most important step in the process because it is most directly accountable to the people. That should not be minimized. This is what I will keep in mind as I serve, and I hope you will too. Thank you.
All right, looks like I have Jeff Johnson. Is that the right one? Just again, tell us who you are, where you live.
My name is Jeff Johnson. I live at 8104 Steed Court in Quelland. Lived in Quelland for 19 years and seen a lot of change and going under Waxaw. Um, I'd like to ask the commissioners tonight about 34 acres that the town owns that's right across the street from Quelland to the right of Anklam Forest and Oak Grove Estates. That's across from Quelland and also across from Curriton. We've been told for years that the property was going to be used for a park. This week, we observed a contractor there doing sole borrowing, and now hearing that the property may be for sale. My questions for the board and mayor, is the property for sale? Number two, what is the process for disposing of town property? Number three, will it be a park, as we've been told, or will it be a development? Number four, will the citizens of Waxaw have a say? And finally, if this is not going to be a park as planned, when and why did this change? We respectfully ask the park to be part of the process and have a voice in what happens in our neighborhood. Thank you.
All right, looks like I have, uh, is it Glenn DeLeo? Great. Just repeat and tell us who you are.
My name is Glenn DeLeo. I live in an unincorporated portion of Waxaw called Jackson. However, my daughter, son-in-law, and my two grandchildren live in Waxaw proper, so I have an interest. And I travel through this town every day, seven days a week. Um, I don't have anything prepared, so just bear with me. I want to just relate an analogy, if you bear with me. I'm a retired police officer from New Jersey, like Mr. Murray. Spent 26 years there, proudly served the township. It was a rough area I worked in. Everything happened from A to Z there. When I rode as a young rookie officer trying to save the world, I rode with a sergeant the first couple of weeks. That sergeant is now deceased, however, he taught me two important rules. He said, in this line of work, you have to care. No matter where on the spectrum you sit tonight, this is caring. Everyone cares. And also equally, he told me, never tell the public who call for service, there's nothing you can do. That's the worst thing you can do, is say there's nothing you can do. People come with children that are drug addicts, their house was just burglarized, their car was just burglarized and stolen. Just tell them you there's, you don't care, there's nothing you, gotta tell them, give them a resource, give them an option. I believe and I respect all of you for your service, I really do. I really feel that with this growth strategy only, and there's nothing we can do, landowner rights, I think that's not what was meant to be what I just said. I think you gotta care and you can't tell people there's nothing we can do. It just has to happen. There's going to be a major accident on these roadways. I sat through the planning board meeting a few weeks ago where the independent TIA officer gave 16 to 19 intersections that are disaster now. It's only going to get worse. I travel Waxaw Marvin and Bonds Grove every day. I travel 16 and Bonds Grove every day. Someone is going to get killed there, and then who do we blame then? I ask you to reconsider all this growth, do whatever you can, get a township attorney who evaluates everything from a moratorium on building to trying to slow the growth, whatever that parameter may be, it's got to be explored. Everything's got to be on the table until the infrastructure can catch up. And I mean that from my heart. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Murray, Robert Murray.
Good evening, Robert commissioners, Mr. Mayor. Pleasure to speak with you all tonight. Um, I'm going to try and read this a little bit, although I was attempting to commit it to memory, but Robert Murray, I live in Quelland. Um, let's see here. I'd like to caution everyone, most of all, I'd like to caution myself to exercise humility. It is through humility that we gain wisdom. Arrogance and bombast will only lead to our own destruction. For it is the exalted man who will be humbled, and it is the humbled man who will be exalted. Our humility will help us to see the path forward. It will help us to guide and hear the voices of those around us and the voices within us. While pride and arrogance will only inhibit our senses, for every person we know and every person we meet can share something that we don't yet know. We cannot take in the wisdom of the others when our senses are blurred and our own, with our own pride and arrogance. We are all very blessed to be here at this time, in this place. As we move rapidly towards the future, we will face many challenges, but none of them are insurmountable. However, our biggest challenge will be unity. Our biggest challenge will be consensus and common ground. With humility and grace, we will strive for unity, the unity that's needed to execute the will of our faithful voters who entrusted us to represent their interests. The people voted for change. They voted for a different path forward, one that is adjusted more towards the needs of our residents, one that ensures a stable future for young and old. I encourage everyone to seek and exercise humility and grace as we all search for a little wisdom and a little peace on our path towards unity. Thank you.
Thank you.
Am I the last one?
No.
Oh, good. That makes it a little easier.
Three minutes, right?
Yeah. Jolapos, I live on Old Providence Road. Um, I actually lived in Valhalla for about seven or eight years as well, so I've had Adalina as part of my place. One of the reasons why I moved was to get away from the traffic. So I moved over to the south side of the traffic, of the tracks to get away from the traffic, and it's now followed me, so it's my fault, I'm sorry. Keeps following me everywhere I go, but, but I am, uh, it's why I say a couple of things, you know, I, I voted for everybody on here, and we were friends in a, in a lot of ways, and it just felt a little bit hurt when things changed after that. Things changed for me on January the 10th, when I became a NIMBY, which I, I guess everybody knows what that is now. I became a NIMBY that's kind of affected by my front side as well as my side, because my entire property and everybody around me is going to see their property destroyed because of, by a thing that we're calling a bypass. But we've now found out that the bypass is not a bypass by any means. It's nothing more than a two-lane road going down the middle of a, a section that's going to take care of the developers. Can bring in an extra 5,000 houses if we let the additional piece go. So I really want to speak strongly to the three remaining members, please do what you can to help us that have been affected by this already, and do what we can to make sure it doesn't get any worse. I walked around downtown today, I counted 38 crosswalks. Jeff will probably correct me, they don't all have lives, but there's 38 points in the area that we're now talking about social distancing where we're going to have crosswalks where kids can be walking across it. Just think about the danger that adds to everything that's already going on when you add drinking to that, to go on it. You currently bring in all the things from Old Providence Road and 75 and from Providence Road and Waxaw Marvin, all of it comes into the same spot where we go 20 miles per hour to get across the tracks. And we're going to bring in thousands of more homes, we're going to bring in drinking, we're bringing all these additional things. How much more can the town possibly handle? We've got to slow down, we've got to work together. The mayor just said be humble, the future mayor said be humble. Uh, I, I, I want to do that too. But I've been called an activist and extremist, and I've been called a cult member because based on what people are saying and the thing. We are not that. I spent, uh, I retired six years ago to spend my time helping people. My sister was murdered right, uh, 20 years ago, so I spend, spend a lot of time with people that have been domestically abused. I spent a lot of time a couple of years to help Pregnancy Center, helping the people that can't speak for themselves. So I am not an activist and nobody else in here is. We all are activists together because we care about people. So let's do what we can to work together Waxaw. Let's make everything right, let's all be happy and try to slow things down. We want to make the developers happy and the business people happy too, but there's got to be a way that we can all make it so it's a win-win for everybody. Thanks.
Thank you, Jeff. All right, I have a Steve Gonzalez. Just again, for everybody's knowledge, just tell us who you are, where you live and all that. Thank you.
Thanks, Steve Gonzalez, resident of Millbridge. Um, I think what you're hearing a lot of tonight is people really want to work together and find solutions for everybody, but we've got major issues with the process that we're dealing with here. Um, look, first, at a minimum, I see no reason why Adalina or the social district should have a final vote until after the newly elected reps are sworn in. To do otherwise is a slap in the face to the residents who overwhelmingly rejected the status quo development strategy. But just as importantly, um, for your own credibility, um, which at least three of you should still care about, um, if these items get approved after the newly elected reps, uh, have the opportunity to review and weigh in on it, uh, it'll be publicly received with far more legitimacy than if it's rammed through in this brief lame duck session. Second, I'm tired of hearing the town use the fact that it doesn't control the roads or schools as an excuse to, as one other gentleman said, you know, ignore us and do nothing, um, when approving requests to rezone at higher density. This is an invalid excuse. We cannot operate from the field of dreams position that if we build it, the infrastructure will come. Breaking the system to better make the case that the county and NC DOT needs to save us is reckless. Hope and ready-fire aim are not prudent strategies for the stewards of this town. If multiple parties with authority are stakeholders in a decision, then all stakeholders should be included in the negotiation and decision-making process to achieve the best viable outcome. And if that's not the way local politics has operated in the past, then maybe now is a good time to try something different with our county and state partners. We need to stop pretending like these decisions are made in a vacuum and claiming that the board has no other choice. Indeed, we're continuously told that we don't understand the limited ability of the board to restrain the pace of development under local law. As a lawyer myself for over 20 years, I have not once heard a genuine legal basis for this position. There certainly are limitations on the board to declare a blanket moratorium on development approval, but that is completely irrelevant to what we're talking about here with Adalina and other similar projects, which is reviewing applications seeking higher density than the zoning rights already vested in the property, one by one, each on its own merits, while considering the impact on schools, roads, police, and other aspects of the community. What I do see in Article 6 of Section 160D, however, is that the board has broad discretion to adopt or reject zoning amendments, and that is to analyze the reasonableness of the proposed rezoning based on a variety of general factors, such as the benefits and detriments to the surrounding community, changed conditions, and the public interest. Again, if the board has been purposely taking an ultra-conservative approach, it is clear that the residents aren't buying it, and so the only responsible action is to let the new board evaluate Adalina and at least weigh in on the town's legal assessments and strategy prior to a vote. Anything less raises questions about the motivations and integrity than almost begs for an investigation. Finally, I'll say one thing about the social district. It shouldn't even be on the agenda today, and it's disappointing that it is. I was at the Millbridge event in front of 100 to 200 people only two weeks ago and five days before the election. We were told in no uncertain terms by the mayor and the two commissioners that the full-time social district plan was a very preliminary concept and not anywhere near ready for actual consideration. Yet here we are, and one has to ask themselves why the misrepresentation. Again, if the board has any respect for its resident and business constituents whatsoever, it should go without saying that this is something that must be deferred to the new board to vet after proper research, communication, and feedback from the public, as others have said. There's no reason this topic should have ever been sneaked into this meeting today. Thank you.
Michael still in the room? Michael Evola? There you go. Talk to your left side.
All right, good evening, mayor, commissioners, town staff. Uh, my name is Michael Evola. I live in the Quelland subdivision. I'm a resident of the town of Waxaw. I also volunteer on the Economic Vitality Committee of the Downtown Waxaw Association. Uh, I rise tonight to speak in support of the proposed social district. I guess over 40 municipalities now, the vast majority being small towns like Waxaw, in 25 counties across North Carolina have implemented permanent social districts, including many in the Charlotte region, including Monroe, Albemarle, Norwood, Huntersville, Cornelius, Kannapolis, Mooresville, Statesville, Newton, Hickory, and Salisbury. These are all small towns with main streets that have revitalized their downtowns, like Waxaw, and implemented permanent social districts. If all these small towns can maintain their family-friendly atmosphere and cultivate a community that supports, uh, supports local businesses with a, uh, social district, I have no doubt in my mind that we can as well. Social districts are not a pass to break the law. Laws on drunk driving, public drunkenness, and disorderly conduct still exist. People still need to drink responsibly. There are even laws that regulate social districts that are mandated by the state and must be followed. Even Disney World in Florida, the happiest place on earth, one of the most family-friendlyest places you can go, has their own social districts that allow open containers and beverages to be enjoyed throughout their resorts and amusement parks. So this isn't a radical idea. Social districts aren't going to cause chaos and mayhem in the streets, okay? It's more of a convenience and allows for more freedom. I've certainly enjoyed it when we've had them at events, I know many others have as well. No one's forcing anyone to participate if they don't want to. And I'm sure when we've implemented it before at events, it's even helped boost sales in our local businesses. It's made us a destination where people throughout the region want to visit our community and support our local businesses, helping grow our local economy. So let's join the many other small towns in North Carolina and implement a permanent social district here in Waxaw. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Jim Hill. I know I saw you in here earlier. Just tell us who you are, you've got three minutes, thanks.
Thank you, everyone. Uh, I'm Jim Hill. Uh, I'm not a resident of Waxaw, I'm actually your next-door neighbor. I live in Wesley Chapel. I'm also the president of the Downtown Waxaw Association. And for those in the audience who are not familiar with us, we're a not-for-profit organization that partners with the town to, um, enhance the downtown Waxaw experience. Our mission is to, uh, bring more people downtown, uh, to enjoy all the amenities that we already have. At our last meeting in December, we unanimously, our board unanimously endorsed establishing a, um, permanent, uh, social district, uh, because we believe that it will be one more amenity that will attract people from all parts of the region, uh, to come to downtown Waxaw to enjoy our parks, our restaurants, uh, our many eating establishments, our many bars and restaurants, and, and, uh, we're also working on, as you probably know, a lot of what we call the placemaking in downtown Waxaw. We've got some Adirondack chairs and we're working on some things by the water tanks. So, um, I, uh, I urge you to, to, uh, consider this. I know this is just a preliminary tonight, but I urge you to move, move forward with it. While it, while it's true that, you know, a social district will increase sales of alcohol, it, it does not increase consumption per person of, of alcohol. I mean, again, it's, it's focused on people who enjoy, you know, a, a fine craft beer or a fine cocktail or, or a glass of wine, and they want to sit outside or walk around downtown. And, and our experience with the, with the two events, um, again, our board, you know, looked at everything that, that happened and the feedback from all of the businesses, and we're firmly convinced that the town has in place all of the necessary safeguards and procedures to keep downtown Waxaw a family-friendly environment and avoid any, any, any issues with it. So I urge you to, to, to move forward. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Jim. All right, thank you to everybody who made, uh, comments tonight. So we'll move, uh, to the consent agenda, so, uh, we have that, uh, I'll look for that motion on that.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
All right, the motion is up. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. All right, we're going to go down to recognitions here. This is always a favorite part of the evening. Lisa Thompson, if you'd come up, you've got, uh, a recognition and a five-year service
Good evening.
Good evening. Welcome back.
Thank you. Madison joined the Waxaw planning staff as a planner in 2018, having just attained his master's in public administration. He was quickly promoted to senior planner in 2021 and added the role of code enforcement administrator, wherein he leads his own staff. Madison has shown himself as a leader for the town since joining. He is always ready to help others, throw the spotlight on their contributions, and is the first throw the spotlight on their contributions, and is the first to celebrate their successes. With his genuine manner and tireless work ethic, he is well-liked and depended upon by the rest of staff. Madison's guidance and shared experiences in planning has been invaluable. He's a true leader and a mentor, and I'm proud to have him on my team. Congratulations, Madison.
Madison. Would you like to say a few words? We're happy to have you here, that's for sure.
Yeah, thank you. My first interaction with the town was my interview, which included Matt Hubert. And he can be quite intimidating at times, but he must have seen something in a young graduate, so I want to thank him. And of course, Mr. Wells and Lisa and everyone in our department who's made this five years an easy five years. And thank you all up here for supporting us every day of every hour. So thank you so much.
Well learned. Little photo op there. Congratulations, Madison. Lisa, you're back up.
Dan started with the town as a building inspector in 2013. His leadership and qualifications have led him to become Chief Building Inspector in 2016, where he leads his own staff of permitted technicians and building inspectors. Dan's team works hard, especially during the uncertainty of COVID and the spike of building permits over the last 10 years. I received countless emails about Dan and his team and the wonderful service they provide. He is a true public servant. Last year, I was here with Dan to recognize his Level 3 Fire Prevention Certification. This was his 15th and final certification. There have been less than 300 people in the history of the state of North Carolina to obtain all 15 certifications. In fact, he had so many certificates hanging on the wall. We recently moved offices. We had to spackle the entire office when he moved, so... Congratulations, Dan. 10 years.
Quite an achievement. 10 years.
Thank you all. It's been quite a ride for 10 years. Wouldn't change a thing. It's been an honor and a privilege to serve. Thank you.
It's been great to have your caliber of person here and the experience. We really need it.
Thank you.
All right, congratulations. All right, next up, we've got a certificate of appreciation, so I'm going to ask who's got that chief. I know your name is up here, but you're winging it today. So we're going to have...
I'm going to speak on behalf of the chief.
You're going to speak on behalf. Okay.
I'm waiting on Officer Price to join us real quick. While he makes his way up here, I don't... Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, Town Manager, as you know, I'm Lieutenant Zill. I'm the Community Service Lieutenant. And we'd like to say thank you to the Beamer, Gail O'Haire. She's been very supportive. Every time I do my patrols, she's always asking, "What can I do for you guys?" Officer Dillon came to me a while back and said, "You know, something we never thought of is we really could use a canine medical kit." I had no idea dogs took a separate kind of medical kit, different tourniquets, different bandages, stuff like that. So Gail was sweet enough to purchase two medical kits for the police department. So on behalf of the chief, the police department, Officer, um, yeah, Price, thank you. Having a brain lapse.
How easy is it?
I'm getting old. It's gray. It's natural, okay? So appreciation for the donation of two canine medical kits. We express our sincere gratitude for your contribution and support to our agency. Gail, this is appreciated.
Can I get you to get in there? The lineup. Gail, thank you very much for that. We appreciate that.
Could I say just a few things?
Yes, ma'am. Absolutely.
We've been in business 27 years, going on 28 come March. And some of you may know, I see some of my customers here that we had an unfortunate accident in September 2020. So, long story short, Officers, Lieutenant Zill... Lieutenant, okay, sorry. Lieutenant Zill had waited for us, along with then-Officer Bailey, until we could arrive, and then, I mean, he kept the place secure until we arrived. So there's just a lot to be thankful for. And also, too, I want to publicly thank our fire department, who is also there on the scene and had swept up the tonnage of glass and also had secured the building with tarps and that, too. So I do appreciate everybody's help, and yeah, you do have to care, and I know that my... our guys.
We have a great crew. Really do.
Take care. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Town Manager Jeffrey Wells wants to be up next, so the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, everybody. I just want to take a few minutes to publicly praise Town Staff for their efforts. Just a couple of weeks ago, as everybody was familiar, that we had a CSX railroad track closure at the intersection of NC 16. So just to take you back a little bit, roughly July or so, we get an email from representatives from CSX that says they're going to close various intersections in town, and this is when we're going to do it. We'll see you then. That was it. And we're like, okay, you know, what are we going to do about traffic control? Nothing. So, all right, we have to mobilize ourselves to make sure that this doesn't turn into an absolute disaster. And quite frankly, we thought it would be. We were very worried about that. We overplanned. We did just about everything we could think of to make sure that that went off without a hitch. And thankfully, it went about as well as you could possibly have something like that go. And I just want to say, the credit goes all to our staff, engineering lead, Matt Hubert, leader of the pack with this, the engineering department, public services, all of police, Parks and Recreation, Waxahachie Volunteer Fire. It took a whole village to accomplish that traffic control operation. Got a little bit of help from the Sheriff's Office as well in some other areas, but it was quite an undertaking. A whole lot of planning, but I'm very proud to say that it went off again about as well as something like that could go. We were calling it internally Carmageddon, but it turned out okay, and I think that's something that we all can be proud of. Thank you.
They all did a great job out there, both in the opening and closing sessions of that, so appreciate all of them. Everybody stepped up. This is, again, Team Waxahachie, so appreciate that. Thank you, Jeff. All right, we're going to jump down to the next items, Presentations, and we're going to have Mirror Pro Tem Brenda McMillan take the floor. So if you'd like to do it from here, please do.
Good evening, everyone. Am I on? I am on. Can you hear me?
Get it close.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. For over 30 years, I have worked in public service. For over... For over 30 years, I have worked in public service. My background is a legal one. My husband is a retired detective. I've lived here in Waxahachie for over 15 years, and my family is from North Carolina. Since living in Waxahachie, I've been active volunteering and working in the schools, town events, and even with the new library. I've served on various committees, including the Capital Finance Committee for the new library, the Planning Board here in town, and now the Board of Commissioners. Waxahachie, as we know, has grown significantly, and we have faced challenges due to this growth. Many people have moved here, which is normal, but how we handle growth is crucial. I am not active on social media, but I have been made aware of many things stated on social media and seen some information and the negativity which has surrounded this current election. Elections should prioritize Waxahachie's best interests, not specific individuals and not groups. I want to address some things that I've seen on social media. One resident, Kathleen Gavin, she stated, "No one lives here, who lives here, wants what they are planning except those who have their hands in the money pot." I question whose hand is in the money pot. This is not true. Jacob Forsyte wrote, "We need to find out how much the developers kick back to Pappas and the crew and watch that funds don't disappear before the new crew moves into office." What funds do we know that are disappearing? This is not true. Margaret H. wrote, "I do not think, although I could be wrong, this crew could be dumb enough to do it on town books. Having three honest people in the room will help bring some transparency and credibility to the town's image." Are we dishonest, or who is honest? This is not true. These comments and others also noted that "the audit proves nothing, then the books look good, not the absence of inappropriate behavior." Pompous, idiots, cowards, liars, thieves, crooks, dishonest. Claims that the Board of Commissioners benefit personally from their positions are baseless and unfounded attacks on individuals' character. We are part of the community, and making such allegations without evidence is unjust. If anyone has any evidence of such behavior, I ask that you bring it forward to our next meeting on November 28th at 6:30 PM, either to the DA's or bring it to the legal authorities. Other social media posts suggest that the incumbent should act in a certain way. Teresa Nolan stated, "The three remaining should change their approach with citizens." Rob France wrote, "If they choose to cooperate and work with the new mayor and commissioners constructively, that's great. But if they choose to obstruct, measures should be taken to remove them from office." Additional comments suggest that the incumbents should fall in line, they should resign, or that their seats will be taken. These may be seen as forms of bullying or intimidation. They are unwarranted. So I ask you, what is civil discourse? The definition reads that civil discourse means respectful conversation to promote understanding and constructive communication, where people share different perspectives to enhance learning. It is vital for democracy, characterized by dialogue supporting the greater good. In today's digital age, polarization and speed have made civil conversations harder. From shouting matches to opinionated posts, we're confronted with incivility daily. Civil discourse is truthful. It's productive. It's audience-based. It's about listening and talking, and it's each speaker's responsibility. Civil discourse is not mere politeness or martyrdom, telling others who they are or pure performance. This past election, more so than any elections I have seen since I have lived here, has been contentious, and it has been divisive. But that's not who we are. That's not who the town of Waxahachie is. We can have different opinions, and we can disagree, but we do not need to be disagreeable. While the election is over, the majority of the population did not vote in this election, and they do not vote in many of our elections. One resident has also stated and made an issue, "The 2023 election results are a product of Waxahachie electorate being the Waxahachie electorate." The one time in 2021 election reelection year is the only time the incumbents made it through to another term in over a decade. The wall commissioner candidates combined 64% of the vote, and that looks impressive until you consider that the challengers took 74% of the vote in 2017 and 69% of the vote in 2019. So if you are new to town or not familiar with these numbers, that would look unprecedented, but it's not. But we now must govern for over 22,000 people. The work of the town still goes on. Yes, there are things that have been slated for us to proceed with, and that's what the current board will be doing until the new board is sworn in. I've been asked how I plan to work with the incoming board. My answer to that, it is not I in working with the new board. It is we. We were all elected to serve Waxahachie. We must find a way to work together respectfully with each other, and that includes our town staff and our town manager. In the face of challenges and disagreements, we must move forward together for a vibrant and prosperous community. I ask that you seek accurate information, and yes, that information can come from our town staff. And do not rely solely on social media, where misinformation spreads very easily. I ask that we not hide behind the keyboard to attack or defame anyone. Waxahachie is better than that. You may not agree with many things that this board has decided, but we must work together for the future of Waxahachie. Waxahachie can work together. We can all work together, and we can do that in a respectful manner for our future. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, we talked about this earlier. Is that a minute break? All right, we're just getting along meeting tonight. All right, we're going to go into the public hearing section of our meeting tonight, so I'm going to entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to open the public hearings.
I get that motion is up. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so what we're going to have tonight, we have three items on the public hearing side. We're going to have the presentation by the presenters, and then there are a couple of people on each one of the topics that we will allow to speak right after each segment of the presentation. So first up, Ms. Lisa is back up again. We have a public hearing for the voluntary annexation petition on the Fister property.
Thank you, Mayor, Board. A request has been submitted by the applicant Shay Holmes, Carolina LLC, for annexation of approximately 227.43 acres. Parcels 06, 159, 010, 017, 016, and 015 are located on Providence Road. It's northeast of Sunset Hill Road. To orient you to the map, we have Providence Road running north and south, Sunset Hill Road running east and west, and the property is outlined in yellow. 160A-31 is the process we follow, given to us by state statute. On October 24th, we did items 1 through 3. We're on item number 4, which is the public hearing, and we're looking for a vote November 28th. We'll bring this back to you. And with that, I'll answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions by the board? Okay, so hearing that, then I will... Okay, so hearing that, then I will drop down to the public hearing comments. We have two people signed up on this specific item. Rick Kraus, if you want to come back up, and that'll be followed by Tony Markort. So, Rick, you have three minutes on this one, too.
Okay, thanks. I'll be much briefer. I just want to express my support for the annexation of the Adelina project property, which in my view will increase affordable housing stock in Waxaw for empty nesters and youngsters alike, while yielding significant improvements in some of the overtaxed intersections that we have already, and strengthen our commercial tax base. I also just wanted to say that should this property, which is located in the center of gravity of our town's growing residential population, be developed only under Union County's purview, we would lose the opportunity to be able to better align that development with Waxaw's unique character and vision for the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Tony, are you in the audience? There you go, very good. Welcome up to the mic. Tell us who you are and where you live.
Yes, I'm Tony Markort. I'm probably the oldest old fart in the room. I'm 87. I live in Shore Eagle Lane in Kirgian. I've been a resident of this fine community for 15 years. And I'll speak briefly, and I'll be less than three minutes. So at any rate, I'm opposed to both items two and three. We've had gross growth in our community, which has far outpaced our infrastructure. And I'm opposed to both of these two proposals. We can't have, we have now, for those who live in this area, and I don't know if you all do or not, but Providence Road is like a parking lot in the morning and afternoon. We don't have the infrastructure. Before we have any more growth, buildings, developments, we need to have infrastructure set up to accommodate this. I know we have down the road, we're going to have four lanes up to our area from railroad up to us, but that's 15 years away. And then we also are going to have some help in getting across railroad tracks. We were supposed to have a diversion there some years ago by our board. That never happened, and I wonder why that never happened. My time is up. Thanks.
Very good, thank you. All right, Lisa, you can go on to the second item, public hearing on the conditional rezoning petition.
Shay Holmes, Carolina is requesting conditional zoning from R40, Union County, to R4, conditional zoning CZ and CCCZ. The site encompasses two main parcels that are approximately 227.56 acres. Conditional zoning is a site-specific development plan. We are able to see that plan ahead of time and add reasonable conditions. The subject property is located north and east of the existing Carrington Square Shopping Center. To orient you to the site, again, you have Providence Road running north and south, Cuthbertson Road running east and west. The property is currently vacant, minus a utility easement, and then you have the floodplain in blue. When we get a zoning application, staff will look at the existing land use patterns and zoning of the surrounding properties. So as you can see in the yellow to the east and northwest, that's R3, that's our residential zoning. This proposal has that same land development pattern. In fact, Waxaw averages 2.5 homes per acre throughout town. This proposal is for 2.3 homes per acre. You can compare that to the surrounding neighborhoods of Lawson and Inverness, which are both 2.6 dwelling units per acre. It has the same density as the Providence Grove subdivision, just to the northwest, 2.3 units per acre. Here's the site plan of the proposed development. The plan shall not exceed 482 units, with a mix of 96 cottage, cottage units, 231 townhomes, 155 single-family home units. In addition, they are proposing 21.49 acres of commercial along Providence Road, where only about 12 acres is developable with the floodplain. Waxaw's traffic consultant, Kim Lee Horn, has prepared a Traffic Impact Analysis, TIA, to determine required transportation improvements within the study area. Data was collected to ensure the traffic created from this project will sufficiently be mitigated. What I want to point out, and this is very unique, is we hire a third-party consultant to do the study. This is not the developer's TIA. A good example of this is the Encore Community that's under construction along Cuthbertson Road. It's a similar number of units that the county approved. They have three intersection improvements. Compared to ours, again, same number of units, we study 19 intersections and have mitigations at 13 of those. Brady Finkley with Kim Lee Horn is here tonight to go through that data shortly after my Town ordinances require squares, parks, and other forms of common open space intended to shape the design and character of a project. The applicant is proposing 69 acres of open space, 26.61 of those acres as active. When I say active, that means taking the form of trails, plazas, gardens, and parks. They have 2.34 miles of trails. In addition, the town also requires a land dedication or a fee in lieu for recreational purposes. This is one I'm most proud of. We brought that text amendment to you all about two years ago. They are required to donate land per the number of units or pay a fee in lieu for that required open space. Based on the proposed number of units, they're required to dedicate 13.77 acres. They're proposing to dedicate 7.15 with the rest 6.62 acres as a fee in lieu, and that's based on the tax value. The applicant is proposing 53.32 acres of interior tree save. Staff worked with the applicant to save heritage trees on this site. In the middle, where the park is being donated, there's about 15 heritage trees being saved. We walked the site, the picture at the bottom left is one we took. It's a really beautiful area, and we're excited that that gets dedicated for a public use. In addition to tree preservation, the applicant's required a 25-foot buffer around the site, onlot trees, street trees, et cetera. Conceptual elevations are provided and must meet the standards of the LDC Section 6, the Town Slum Development Code, during construction plan review. I'll skip through this because I know the applicant has some more pictures to present. State law mandates that zoning be undertaken in accordance with a comprehensive plan and that a consistency statement be prepared and approved for every zoning amendment. The Waxaw Land Use Map 2021 has this as a joint planning area outside of the town boundaries. These are areas outside of town to be planned concurrently with Union County. So if we look at the Union County Comprehensive Plan on the bottom left, they designate the area as mixed residential along the frontage of NC 16. There's about 50 acres there in the bottom left in orange. This is higher-density residential, including apartments and townhomes, the county's comprehensive plan. In the back, the yellow in the bottom left, is designated for no more than two units per acre. The Waxaw 2016 Comprehensive Plan has the site as intended growth sector. This intended growth sector is situated within the 12-mile creek basin, where transportation routes and utility infrastructure are either present or can be easily extended to support urban development. It continues to say where land that is outside of the current town limits, the town should actively pursue partnerships with property owners and developers to encourage voluntary annexation, to consolidate and rationalize the town's boundaries. A formal neighborhood meeting with the updated plan was conducted in August of 2023. The minutes provided are as part of your packet. The major concerns are listed here. There is a connection to summer led that we have worked with the HOA. This development added 60 to 80 additional peak hour trips to that subdivision, so we've worked with them on removing that connection to that stub road and making that pedestrian As far as schools, water, and sewer, the town does not have the authority to deny or regulate a development due to sewer or school capacity. We are limited to the purview of our town plans and ordinances. Union County Public Works is currently permitting projects and are around 90% permitted at this time in the 12-mile facility. There are no projects on hold. Union County Water has plans to expand this facility to 1.5 MGD, and the project should be bid early next year with a two-year construction timeline. As far as schools are concerned, staff has a great relationship with their staff. I've worked with Don Obrum for the past 15 years. Don told me they hire a third-party demographer to provide forecasts of enrollments for the next 10 years. That report is on their website. He not only looks at new residential development, but also economic factors such as inflation, interest rate, as well as demographic factors, migration rates, and birth rates. With everything combined, a new residential development does not necessarily equate to a rise in enrollment for the affected school. A spate of development in a particular area could very well have an impact. This development will go to the Marvin Ridge Cluster. In the last year, year and a half since this has started, Sandy Ridge is at 81% rated capacity. Last year, they were at 87. Marvin Ridge Middle is at 97% capacity. Previously last year, it was at the same 97%. And then Marvin Ridge High is at 111. Previously, that was 112. The McKibben Report shows a decline in school enrollment for the years of 2026 to 2030, when this project will actually start to go vertical. We're seeing some of these same trends. People are aging in place, not having as many kids, and there's no mass exodus when kids graduate high school. I have our home starts for the last four years, over the last 12 years, we've averaged 256 home starts a year, and then last year was 143. This year, we've done 13. We're seeing some of these similar trends, and they project about the same amount next Planning Board reviewed the rezoning on both September 21st and October 17th. The Board recommended approval with a 6-0 vote. Following conditions are for you to consider. One is to strike the convenience store with gas and fuel. Two is to remove the summer-led way connection to the Inverness subdivision to make that pedestrian only. Number three, along the north, south, and east-west spine, they're asking for a multi-use path. And number four, where land is disturbed under steep slopes or BMPs, they're asking it to be replanted and replaced with native trees and grasses. They also wanted to bring up the TIA recommendations for the importance of getting Waxaw Marvin at Bons Grove improved with all the school traffic going up that way, try to get it ahead of schedule. Providence Road at Kensington, move that up if we can, and then Cuthbertson Road at Amavi Street, there's a proposed roundabout there if we can get that done earlier. They would recommend that. This is our process. We're on the first line, the conditional rezoning. We saw this project about two years ago. It has went through staff and TRC review. I have the TRC, that's Technical Review Committee, listed at the bottom left. All these agencies see this plan throughout all of these processes. We've held numerous neighborhood meetings, planning board, it's been to the planning board three or four times. We're tonight here at the public hearing, and then the Board of Commissioners will make a decision at the next meeting. Still has to go through construction plan approval, that's an administrative staff review, but they cannot proceed with construction until we have Union County Public Works sewer. So if they cannot get that sewer within two years of vested rights, they've got to start this process all over. So that's our safeguard, if they don't get sewer, it comes back and we get to make this decision again. And then before they can go vertical, we get the project bonded and it goes through a final plat process. And with that, I'd like to ask any questions. Otherwise, I have Kim Lee, Brady with Kim Lee Horn here tonight to do a presentation, and also the applicant would like to do a presentation.
Why don't we let Kim Lee do their presentation and then hold your questions in case there's more from that.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Thank you for having me here tonight. My name is Brady Finkley, and I work for Kim Lee Horn. As Lisa mentioned, we are contracted with the town to perform the TIA. It's a unique process that the town has, I'll kind of cover it tonight a little bit. But yeah, thank you for having me here. Address is 200 South trialon Street, Suite 200, Charlotte, North Carolina, 28202. So tonight, we're going to start kind of broad, want to give an overview as a reminder to help the current board and the public kind of understand Waxaw's TIA policy, why it's unique, why it's important, how it came to be, and also what we look for in TIA's and what we're only allowed to look for in TIA. So kind of help you understand the bigger picture of the TIA process before we kind of dive into the Adelina. So start with the TIA policy. A little background, so as we all know, there's been a lot of traffic increase, volume increase in Waxaw over the past at least decade or so. We personally, Kim Lee Horn's been working with the town of Waxaw since about 2015. Back then, there was a STIP project you probably have heard of, which is NC 16 YD 5769, which at that time, STIP is a state transportation improvement program, which from the state prioritizes all of the projects across North Carolina, ranks them, and then puts them in funding categories to be funded. Back in 2015, they were looking at volumes along 16, and this was based off of past growth models that did not see enough growth along 16 that warranted funding of NC 16. So in fact, at that time, the NC 16 YD project was recommended by the agencies, not by the town of Waxaw, but by the NPO to be removed from the STIP at that time. And that's whenever we were working with the town, and kind of, it clearly didn't make sense. We knew a lot of growth was coming to Waxaw, approvals had occurred, and it's sort of like opposite gravity where a lot of the traffic is feeding north along 16, so it just didn't make sense. So we kind of dug into the numbers a little bit and looked back to see what they were going off of their numbers. And they're looking at 2010 volumes, looking all the way up to 2040, and we had went out and collected true counts in 2015 and realized that the 2015 counts had already outpaced the growth on NC 16. Thanks, sir. Had already, the growth in 2015, based on our actual collected counts, had already outpaced the growth. had already outpaced the growth they projected up to 2040, right? So clearly, the growth that they had projected back in 2015 just didn't, was not nearly in line. So we worked with NC DOT and with the NPO to get that put back onto the STIP. And so as a part of that, the town at the time was trying to really understand what was going on. How can we get a little, our arms a little bit better around the traffic problem and address, and address the traffic issues that we're seeing? And so we, they revisited the current TIA process, which at that time was kind of primarily handled through NC DOT through the state, which is really standard practice, and I'll get into some of those differences now. So at that time, we worked with the town, and the town developed their current TIA policy in 2016. So they're looking to do a few different things. NC DOT's standard warrant for a, for a traffic study is three thousand trips per day. So to put that in context, that's about three hundred single-family homes. So if you have a development, development that comes in that's two hundred and fifty single-family homes, generally, NC DOT will not warrant a TIA. And so, as you know, in a lot of the suburbs, including Waxall, there was a lot of these smaller developments that were having these sort of cumulative effects on traffic, but not, were not being addressed through the, through the development TIAs. So the town wanted to understand how we can get our arms around that a little better. Also, the TIA policy allows decision-makers like yourself and staff to make, to make land use decisions by looking at the transportation component of it. And then, as we'll get into in just a minute, it also, the way it was framed was to allow consistent, accurate traffic information to be a part of each, each TIA. So they kind of build on one another. And then also to reflect the town's visions and have more of a voice, because at that time, it was really being carried through NC DOT. And NC DOT is, you know, they look out after the whole state, the whole region. And so it's kind of hard for them to understand and really have their arms tied into each small development and make sure it's reflecting the town's vision. So we wanted to bring the town in there as well. So before 2016, to kind of summarize that, when there was no TIA ordinance or policy, it was governed by NC DOT dating back to about the eighties. As I mentioned, that NC DOT has broad jurisdictional review, kind of looking at the region and state. Developments less than three thousand trips did not require a TIA. And also, the TIAs were performed by a different TIA consultant hired by the developer. And as a traffic engineer, I've been called many names, and it's just understood that people tend to not trust a, a, a traffic study when it is done by a developer, regardless of what's in the traffic study. I think the town understood that, and so they wanted to get a little bit, you know, look at it. Is there a different way to do it to have more trust, regardless if it's even changing what the data is in the TIA, just being done on behalf of the town versus behalf of the developer? And so they, they worked, they worked through a TIA policy that allows them to do that. But it also has some other benefits. So the, the, by having a consistent consultant that's doing each TIA, that consultant is well aware of all the transportation issues, all the developments going on, all the transportation projects that are going on, and also can reutilize data to make sure that, that there's fairness across the board when it comes to the traffic studies. And so what, what the current TIA policy allowed the town to do in 2016 was to reduce that TIA threshold. That was one of the bigger things that the town wanted to do, like I said. So instead of three thousand daily trips by NC DOT for the town, a TIA is required either if it trips one thousand daily trips, so a third of NC DOT's, or one hundred peak hour trips. And that peak hour component is important, because you have some developments that might be higher peak hour trip generators, that, that's really where most of us are filling that traffic during those peak hours. Think of office complexes. General office may not have a lot of, a ton of daily trips, but from a peak hour standpoint, it's really, it's really highlighted within those peak hours. It really puts a lot of stress and burden on the, on the infrastructure here. So the town's current TIA policy does look at, or does require a TIA based off of a thousand daily or a hundred peak hour trips. The TIA consultant, as we mentioned, is hired by the town. It creates consistency, increased trust in the data. Historical knowledge is not getting diluted, so you're not having a different developer consultant coming in and doing each separate TIA, which may not have any kind of historical knowledge on the town, and also more robust understanding of the town's vision, policies, challenges, and priorities.
All right, we'll, we'll let him, we'll let him finish his presentation, would you please? Then you are free to exit. So please continue.
Thank you. So with the current TIA policy, the town is involved in the beginning. So all of the parameters that we're going to talk about with Adelina, they have a say in what goes into the traffic study versus seeing it on the back end. There's a defined study area. Safety, the town is stressing the importance of safety. I've heard that a few times tonight within the public comments. And so there is a crash analysis that's a part of the town's TIAs. The town also looks at a bill plus five. So that allows us to look at developments, especially in this area, where we have a lot of future projects that are coming onboard, where we can look at the analysis or the development in place, both before and after a TIP project's in place to understand the impacts. If, for instance, a, a state project may slide, which we have seen before. And so we, the town gets a better understanding of what the impacts will be, both with and without those, those, those state-funded projects. And then it also allows us to consider and include all the locally adopted plans. So that's kind of the history behind what put the town's TIA policy in place. This is kind of here to, to help us understand what the purpose of a TIA, TIA is. And I want to read this directly from the TIA policy. That says, "A tool used to evaluate the incremental impacts," and that's important, "on the surrounding transportation system, which helps local decision-makers evaluate whether development is appropriate for a site or identify certain mitigation measures that are necessary to maintain the integrity of the transportation network." And the second part reads, "To mitigate transportation deficiencies caused by the projected impact of their proposed development and not unacceptable background conditions or other deficiencies caused by off-site development within the defined study area." So the purpose is not to correct existing deficiencies. Legally, we're not allowed to do that. And so the purpose of a TIA is to, is to project future traffic operations without the site, add the site on top, understand what that, what that delta is, and mitigate its impacts if needed based off of the town's mitigation requirements. And I will mention, mention that NC DOT is not removed in this process. They work right here with us. Basically, everything that the town requires, NC DOT also requires, the town just requires more. And so the town works right in partnership with us. And here's, here's just kind of interpreting the results. This is level of service, which we'll get into a little bit later. You have unsignalized and signalized intersections. Both have different, different measures. Unsignalized, it's important, the important thing I want to note here is that on signalized intersections, you're not looking at an overall intersection. It's only on the side street, the stop-controlled approach. Signalized, we look at the whole intersection. And then interpreting the results from the Highway Capacity Manual, it says, "The appropriate level of service for a given system element in the community is a decision for local policymakers and for cost, environmental impact, or other reasons roadways are typically designed not to provide a level of service A conditions during peak periods, but instead to provide some lower level of service that balances individual travelers' desires against society's desires for financial resources. Nevertheless, during low-volume periods of the day, a system element may operate at level of service A." So what we will be talking about tonight, we, we focus on the two highest traffic periods of the day, so the AM and the PM peak hours. We count and we collect. We understand what the, what the most congested times are of the day. We add, we look at the site, their traffic added during those times, and then mitigate based off of those times. Any questions on the TIA policy? So we will get into the Adelina TIA. We're gonna start out with looking to see what goes, what went into the, into the Adelina TIA. TIA thresholds didn't meet both Town of Waxall and NC DOT's thresholds as a part of the TIA review and approval. Town of Waxall, NC DOT, both the Local Office and Congestion Management Section, which is in Raleigh, has been a part of it, the applicant, and then Kim Lee Horn. The TIA has been updated, so we initially ran it with, with the summer-led connection there, but the applicant has committed to not providing that connection. And so we have updated the TIA to remove that connection to see what, what traffic impacts there are without that connection. And so the results that we're talking about tonight and the current TIA that's going forward does not have a summer-led connection. And then finally, the mitigation that we're talking about tonight is still contingent on NC DOT's review and approval as well. All right, so TIA parameters. We looked at three phases. The important things will be Phase one and two. We looked at prior to the U fifty-seven sixty-nine widening project in place. And so that was based off of five hundred and thirty-three residential units in a public park. And then Phase three, we looked at, and the applicant committed to only moving forward Phase three after the widening project is in place. So we looked at it with the project in place, and that was with one hundred and twenty-five thousand square feet of commercial space plus forty-eight live-work units along the NC sixteen frontage. I do believe that, that those densities have come down quite a bit since we first scoped this project. Nevertheless, our TIA is based off of the higher usages, and the mitigation is based off the higher usages. Just recognizing that the densities have, that they have committed to now, I believe, have commented below that. So site access, look at Phase one initially. We're calling Adelina Street, so number one, right? So right here, this is across from Matron Hospital, south of Gray Byram Road. There was a lot of coordination with the U fifty-seven sixty-nine project, because it clearly has a lot of impacts, including widening along the site's frontage, but also U-turn bulbs that will be created with the reduced conflict intersections, as you can see here. And so this location is based off of, NC DOT was not allowing us to have a fourth-leg connection to Gray Byram Road, so it need to be offset from there. It also needed to be offset from the U-turn bulb. And the important thing to know there is it is a right and right out. So there's not going to be another signal that's added by this development along sixteen. It'll be a right and right out both before and after the widening project. So before the widening project, the, the traffic with no connection to summer-led, the traffic would come down and turn into Sunset Hill to come through and connect into development. Once the widening project is in place, the U-turn bulb will facilitate that movement there, and they can make a U-turn and come into their main access, a number one there. Second access, that'll be in place in Phase one, would be this connection that connects down into Sunset Hill. So the Amavi development has, has been approved, is extending Sunset Hill east of its current terminus, which is a belt right here, east to provide a connection to Amavi, which also connects down to Cuthbertson Road. And so Adelina would be basically continuing that road north. So you'd have a parallel route to sixteen on the eastern side of Sunset Hill Road. And then Phase three, there is a, a connection between the commercial piece and Phase three to Carrington Square, which there is a, a right and right out, probably not going to be very heavily used, but that is another connection point, cross connection there. And then there is a right-out-only driveway in this part up here. And that was really to facilitate the movements that, that allows folks to, to get out of here without having to connect in and use that right and right out. So as Lisa mentioned, we looked at nineteen different study intersections that are shown here, all the way from Bons Grove Church Road to the north, down to Prescott Glen to the south, and also to Waxall Marvin, three intersections on that side. And we did collect counts back in April and May of 2022, when, when schools were in session. We also collected vehicles, pedestrians, and bicycles as part of those counts. Background growth, so we took, the way our TIAs work is basically you take your existing data, and then we're gonna, we're gonna sort of project it up to the future. So to do that, we look at two separate, two separate, what I call buckets of background growth. One is non-specific growth, and that's more of a, of an annual growth rate that we use, and we used to do two percent per year for that. Then we look at specific growth from other approved developments within the area. We take that traffic and add it up, add it on top of that as well. So when you take the two percent non-specific growth and the three approved developments within the area, we're looking at about four to five percent growth per year. So that's not from 2023 to our build-out years, but that's per year, annually growing up to our build-out years of 2027, 2029, and 2030.
No, have to wait. Thanks. Please continue.
Thank you. Our predevelopments, we looked at three there right in the area. One is the Encore Development that's in the county. One is, that's over to the east. One is the Amavi Development to the south. Another one is Madison Park, which is south of Carrington. NC DOT TIP projects, we talked about one of them. There's actually quite a few. So EB fifty-nine fifty is a project that is scheduled for construction in 2024. It is improving Kensington Drive, and for our purposes, the important thing that's still in is adding an eastbound right turn lane on Kensington at sixteen. A subset of the U fifty-seven sixty-nine widening project that NC DOT has thankfully created ahead of that is an intersection improvement project at Bons Grove Church and sixteen. So that's a recent addition to the, to the STIP this year, and that is currently scheduled for construction in 25 to 26. That'll look at adding both a signal and a northbound left turn lane to that intersection, much needed. So kind of similar to what occurred in the Great Byram a couple of years ago. Go over to the west side of that would be HL zero-one-one-six that is currently scheduled for construction in fiscal year 2028. It's also a recent addition to the STIP that's looking at taking that nasty intersection of Waxall Marvin Road and Bons Grove Church Road and converting that, realigning it, converting it to a multi-lane roundabout. And then finally, the, the STIP project that will, that will widen NC sixteen mainly to what we call reduced conflicts intersections, that will, that will go all the way from railroad extension all the way down to Waxall Parkway, currently scheduled for construction between 2028 and 2032, with significant improvements to a lot of our study intersections here. All right, so looking at specifically Adelina site traffic. So we have background traffic. We've grown it up, got all the transportation projects. Now we take the development traffic. We talked about three phases. The first phase is the residential, and that's, that first phase is based on three hundred and sixty-four units. You see here, AM peak, two hundred and twenty-six total trips. That's in and out, PM, two hundred and eighty-four. Phase two, also residential in the park. Five hundred and thirty-three units. That's not additional, that's total between Phase one and Phase two. It'll be three hundred and twenty-eight AM trips, four hundred and twenty-four PM trips. And Phase three, this is when the commercial comes in, and also we're assuming the widening project is in place. And that looks at the residential units, adds forty-eight live-work units, and then the commercial space. And so it's important also to note that when you have residential first, and then you add in commercial, there's some synergies that happen between those, some good synergies. That is, you have folks that may be living in those residential units that want to go to commercial. They're not added trips, so we call that internal capture that was taken into account. There's also pass-by traffic when you, when you have commercial. That's traffic that's already along sixteen, that's not new trips. They're going to come in, go to the commercial, come right back out on their way. So we're not adding the trips, but they're added to the driveways. All right, and then the mitigation. Any questions before, on the, sort of the buildup to the analysis?
Continue on.
Okay. So mitigation, we looked at nineteen intersections. Twelve of them, we identified mitigation for. As you can see here, here highlighted in yellow, which we'll dive into. They were broken out by Phase one. You've got, I believe, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven of those intersections. Phases one and Phase two, mitigation identified for. And then in Phase three, you have the remaining five or six intersections that have a mitigation identified for. The first one is at Providence Road and Bons Grove Church. We already talked about in the background, there will be a signal and a northbound left turn lane in place. That'll be, soon to be constructed in 25 to 26. When we add our site development in, it, it, it still drops level of service. So we're adding, we're adding enough traffic there that it does warrant mitigation, and we identified- we're adding enough traffic there that it does warrant mitigation, and we identified an eastbound right turn lane there. The important thing to note here is that because we have that current STIP project going on in place, you know, there's there's the there will be hope that we maybe the developer can work with NC DOT to have that eastbound right turn lane incorporated within that STIP project to hopefully maybe have that put in place with that project versus coming out two different times to impact the traveling public to construct it. Next, we'll move down to Providence Road and Sunset Hill Road. The important thing to note here before we talk about our traffic is that today, if you're familiar with Sunset Hill Road on this eastbound approach, it really acts like a driveway, you know, you have a connection to Carrington Square and you have a back connection to the Lowes, not a whole lot of traffic there today. But in the future, with the AMAVI that's going to be extending Sunset Hill Road to the east and they connect down to Cuthbertson Road, there might be some traffic that's going to utilize that, but you'll also have a AMAVI traffic on there. So that trap, so that this intersection will get a little bit more demand than what it is today. So then when we add the traffic on top of there, you know, we do see an impact that warranted mitigation. It is the only signalized intersection that is planned for this site to sixteen, and so it does get a heavy burden of the site traffic, this intersection, and we're we're we are recommending a southbound right turn lane there, and then also extension of the westbound left turn lane, which is is pretty small now, to be able to give you more storage here, and that did show to mitigate to the impact of the of the development. One thing to note that with that southbound right turn lane is that this these are the the current conceptual plans for the U fifty-seven sixty-nine STIP project. The yellow that you see highlighted is future pavement, so as a part of that develop, as a part of that STIP project, they are planning to widen to the west to create the extra lanes they need. So that southbound right turn lane that would presumably go in by the development would not be put in and then thrown thrown away with the STIP project. It could be converted to a through right at that at that time versus being, you know, relocated. And potentially, they could also work with with DOT, depending on where the right-of-way phase stands with that project as well. All right, so one of our favorite intersections, which is sixteen Kensington and Cuthbertson, the Madison Park development that is planned, that is approved just south of Kirat, and they have two phases. The first phase is under construction right now, I think it's self-storaged. The second phase is where a lot of the commercial demand comes, and they have, they're committed to putting in or taking the current southbound right turn lane that is at this intersection and converting that to an additional through lane. So if you're familiar, going north, you have two through lanes at this intersection, but south today, we only have one. So this would then convert that to have two three, two lanes of through capacity going southbound, just like you do going northbound, and having that drop down into, I believe, their driveway just before the Bridge, the Twelve Mile Creek. And we also talked about the eastbound right turn lane that'll be put in place by the STIP project. So when we add the development, there's still quite a bit of impact here. We are pretty limited in what we can do here. You have developments that are built on the corners on all four approaches, most of them have retaining walls, circulation for the drive-throughs, so really limited space to be able to widen, and really, that's one of the reasons I believe that NC DOT is recommending converting this to a Michigan left, which is not widening out and creating more lanes, it is making it more efficient by removing left turn lanes, because they're limited in what they can do here. There's a lot of traffic, as you know, to be processed in all approaches. And so what what we have recommended here for mitigation is putting the right turn lane back in place, but you keep the through lane that Madison Park would have, but then add the right turn lane back in place, and that showed that was shown to mitigate the impact. And similar to Sunset Hill intersection, this unfortunately doesn't have the yellow highlight, but you can kind of see how on the eastern side, this is, so this is the current STIP plan for this intersection, on the eastern side, it's already built out on McDonald's, so the widening's happening to the west, so this right turn lane that will presumably go in place could also be reutilized when the STIP project comes in as well and not not being thrown away. And then similarly, could potentially work with DOT on the right-of-way there if needed. All right, so now we're over Waxaw Marvin. One thing to note here is that Waxaw Marvin Recorder Study that your board adopted a few years back did identify the need for a signal and turn lanes at that intersection, though not funded, that's a that's a that's a it's a planning document that recommends the need for that. Turn lane has been added recently to Gray Byram, but still missing that southbound left turn lane and still missing the signal. And so when we add the site traffic on there, it does get does get worse, identify mitigation is is identified as needed. And here, more than more than capacity, it's really a safety issue. As you're probably aware, coming south right now, you've got a pretty heavy demand that's in this shared, the same lane that wants to turn left and also wants to go through. When you have that occur, you've got impatient drivers, especially coming home in the evening. It's actually puts pressure, if you've ever been in the situation where you're kind of that first left turn driver, you feel a lot of traffic backing up, but there's no gaps. You then find yourself unfortunately taking an unsafe, smaller gap than you actually should and creates a really a really dangerous situation, we call those angle crashes, which are some of the most severe and could be, you know, result in in serious injuries or even fatalities. And so a left turn lane would go a long way from separating that traffic out, providing a safe space for left turners to sit, to turn, and and also improve the or reduce the delay for the for the through traffic that kind of just wants to get through, but they're sitting there waiting on the left turn traffic. I'll also note that we did run a preliminary signal warrant analysis at this intersection. It did show that a peak or that signal warrant is is warranted both with and without the site. So the southbound left turn lane does mitigate their site, but it is important to know that I do think that it's it's it would be something that, you know, NC DOT, the town, Union County agencies should probably pursue pursue in the future to get a signal there. All right, and then continuing north at this intersection of Waxaw Marvin, Bonds Grove Church, pulled a drone shot that we had used previously to kind of show this intersection a little bit better, which you're probably familiar with. So we've talked about this intersection currently being scheduled for significant improvements, which would take Bonds Grove Church and kind of curve it in to tie in ninety degrees, flatten this curve out, create a multi-lane roundabout with with turn lanes, so not a full two-lane roundabout, but there would it would be a turn lane with roundabouts, which we call a multi-lane roundabout. That is not scheduled for construction until twenty twenty-eight. Our build-out was warranted. And so mitigation for that would presumably be a a right turn lane from there, from Waxaw Marvin to turn south. The STIP project moves forward, you know, the hopes would be kind of work with DOT to see if there's some kind of option for payment allure or work with them to be able to provide possible mitigation versus or payment allure versus constructing that turn lane and then tearing it out a year later, right? So I think timing needs to be figured out in there, but it it's it's definitely an intersection that that has its own safety problems, and I think the biggest one being that we've seen before is, you know, if you're sitting here at the stop stop sign, there's folks that are coming pretty fast, you don't know if they're turning right or going through, you kind of make that, you gotta make that judgment call on whether I should go or not. So we still recommend that a right turn lane, because if this STIP project does not go forward, I think the right turn lane helps that, because it 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 gives you more confidence if someone is getting in the right turn lane that they're actually turning right versus guessing if they're if they're if they're turning right, so. But yeah, the the goal, ideal goal there would be to work with DOT and see if they there could be something done to to improve that intersection. And this is the this is the concept diagram that was provided by DOT on that roundabout, just for your information. And then the, I believe someone alluded to this earlier, but a dual U-turn bulb, these are pretty prominent along state highways, US seventy-four, you see them quite a bit, you see them on NC sixteen going up on the other side of of Charlotte, a lot of state highways that are being reconfigured from full standard eight-phase signals to reduce conflict intersections on state highways. State highways are, NC DOT views those as mobility corridors, so we're all about moving traffic up and down as fast as possible. There are a lot of dual U-turn bulbs at signalized intersections, and so this would be one that that would be enhanced from the site. So currently, the the plan for U fifty-seven sixty-nine is to have a single U-turn bulb at this location and really is to facilitate the Gray Byram movement. You can't turn left from Gray Byram to go north anymore, so it'd be turning right, coming down, making a U-turn, based on the plans. This would be, you know, the heavily used by Adalina traffic, and so Adalina traffic from the north would be coming south and added to that, and so the mitigation for there based off of the analysis showed that a dual, a second U-turn was was needed, and that was shown to mitigate it. And then the the last piece of this is the roundabout that we discussed down here. So when AMAVI came through, if for those of you that were on the board at the time, we had talked about a roundabout at this location or a signal, at least allowing it to be full movement. At that time, after we had talked with the board, NC DOT came back and said that they were not going to allow full movement at that location at this time until a potential connection to the north occurred. Basically, they didn't have more traffic to be able to warrant full movement at that intersection. And so its current plan is to be a right and right out intersection. The problem with that would be, especially whenever U fifty-seven nine, fifty-seven sixty-nine comes on board, if you are east of sixteen and want to go east on Cuthbertson, let's say to Cuthbertson High School, you've got to kind of turn right to go around a number of U-turn bulbs to come back up to go up and then turn right and continue going east. Whereas if we allowed full movement, we can just come down and turn left, Cuthbertson Road, so we're taking a lot of traffic off of sixteen, which which makes a lot of sense. The town is full in support of that, and based on early indications, NC DOT appears that they would be on board with that, that will be under phase three. Okay, so so not under phase one or phase two, but under phase three, when the fifty-seven sixty-nine project is in place. We're looking at a roundabout and not a signal, because there's a bridge that is currently located pretty close to that intersection, that driveway, that doesn't allow us to get a left turn lane in. We wouldn't want to put a signal there without a left turn lane, because you would have the problems that would be queuing, queuing cars up pretty significantly on Cuthbertson Road, so the roundabout would be the the mitigation there. And the AMAVI team has, town staff has worked with the AMAVI team to to plan for the right-of-way needed for that roundabout. And so, yeah, in summary, twelve out of nineteen, study intersections we're identifying mitigation for throughout the three phases. With that, I'll take take any questions. Thank you.
That's a lot to follow. Commissioner Moore, I see you're going for the button.
I just had a quick question. Out of all the points that were studied, do any degrade or will stay in a degraded state after the upgrades?
I can get back to you on that. There's a lot to look at between each phase, between each intersection. Yeah, I can get back to you on that.
Any other questions, Jason, anybody? Certainly, if anybody has any thoughts of the complexities of planning any type of project in any municipality, I'm certainly hoping that they understand that every project goes through this kind of scrutiny, especially here in the town of Waxaw, and certainly even before us in twenty sixteen, these kind of measures were put in place. We're dealing with things that were before this and didn't even have a TIA requirement. And so we're playing catch-up on a lot of it, but again, all of this gets in, installed because of this potential project. Otherwise, it would not happen. So I think we have to understand and recognize how it works and the layers and complexities of all the work that traffic engineers go through, and that's just one part of the project. So I will say kudos to you, that was a great presentation. I get to hear him speak every so often at CARPO when he's up there presenting, going through this, so very well done.
Thank you.
And very informative, I appreciate that a great deal. And Lisa, thank you for putting all this part of this together. Gentlemen that had the question, if you would like to go to Ms. Lisa. Well, all right, so hold that thought. Anne.
The question that I have is, I know specifically that the TIA and the mitigations is just for the mitigations on top of what this development would bring, but I would, you know, what are your thoughts if these turn lanes do come in? Doesn't that protect the safety of all the citizens that would go through it, even though this mitigation is just for this particular traffic?
Yeah, it's a great question.
Can you speak to that at all?
Yes, that's a great question, and we get quite a bit. The reality is, you you can't mitigate the exact impact of just the development, because a lot of times, you know, let's take a right turn lane, for example, Bonds Grove Church and sixteen recommend a right turn lane. It probably mitigates it back further than what is required, but the reality is, we can't require them to build only a third of a turn lane, right? They're going to build the full turn lane, and so that turn lane then would mitigate more than what their actual impact is.
So it sounds like what you're saying is if if there's a turn lane, it's going to prove the safety for anybody going through it, just not the traffic that's generated from this development?
That's correct. And the the purpose of the TIA is to mitigate the impacts for the current traveling public, to mitigate the impacts that they're going to feel from the traffic added from the site.
But those mitigations also improve traffic or safety in general for everybody who uses it, just not the added traffic from that development?
In general, yeah.
Anybody else? Well, here's what I'm going to do. So if you have a question for the traffic engineer, I'm going to take you offline, because this is a public hearing, and so we want to go through and complete that, but he can be available to you and Lisa can be available to you if you want to step in the hallway or go outside after after he's completed, if that's okay with you. All right.
And then we still have a presentation from the applicant.
Okay.
I'm waiting for my presentation to be pulled up. Good evening, Mayor Pappas, members of the board. My name is Bridget Grant. I'm a land use consultant with Maureen Van Allen, and it's a pleasure to be here tonight. I'm here assisting Shay Holmes on the proposed rezoning. I'm here with Zach Ducey, as well as Peter Tatchy with ESP Associates, our landscape architect. Sound must come in.
There you go.
Lisa and Brady did a phenomenal job, and I promise, mine is not as long as Brady's, and I will not duplicate anything that they've already discussed. So I always like to take a minute to describe the benefits of conditional zoning. When you're going through a buy-right development, we don't have the opportunity to get certainty on development or community engagement. We don't have the opportunity to get higher level design standards or even sort of raise the bar on public benefit. When we go through this process, we are asking for something that's not allowed under the existing ordinance, and in return, we go through and try to find different ways to raise the bar on the development, to give you what you wouldn't get through buy-right development, and that includes traffic study. I mean, you can't ask for in a buy-right development a number of off-site improvements, you certainly can't ask for, and your attorney can verify, you can't ask for intersection studies at nineteen off-site and ask people to make purchase of right-of-way and off-site improvements for buy-right. So through conditional zoning, we look for ways to get the traffic improvements, increased architectural standards, building articulation, larger buffers, signature open spaces. It's intended to be context sensitive. It's not just a blanket zoning. We basically look at the site and find specific ways this site could be improved in the context of the community that it's in. So I think it's important to say that this site and the work on this effort began probably more than eighteen months ago. Our first community meeting was in September of twenty twenty-two. We've gone through a number of different outreach strategies, numerous meetings with staff. As Lisa mentioned, we presented in front of the planning board, I think, at least three times to continue to work through this process, and Brady's traffic study probably was a six- to seven-month process. So it's not something that's done quickly, it's certainly not something that gets rushed through, there's a lot of thought and intentionality to how this all comes together. So Lisa described the site and where it is in context. I like talking from this color plan, it's often easier for people to understand. You can see that we've got a diversity in the types of housing that's being promoted for the site, and that's to basically address housing for all. It's an opportunity to provide a different form of single-family home, townhomes, and cottages. We did eliminate that vehicular collection connection up to Summerlet. We've got an extensive amount of tree save identified throughout the site. And one of the things that we're most excited about is there's a seven-point-one-five-acre public park that's going to be done, dedicated and donated to the that's going to be dedicated and donated to the town at the center of the site. It's also important to note that the overall density is 2.1 dwelling units per acre. So it's not a higher-density development. What we're doing is increasing the amount of open space, which is actually better for the environment, better for natural habitat, in an effort to provide smaller lots, which a lot of people choose for these days for the lifestyle that we're leading. We spent a lot of time talking about this connector road from AMAVI up to Adelena. So I won't spend a lot of time on this, but why it matters? This connector road provides two alternatives to get you to Providence Road and provides relief from the Providence Road and Cuthbertson intersection. This is the type of connection that you don't necessarily get to guarantee when you're going through a buy-right development, but you get that as part of the thoughtful interaction that happens through conditional zoning. Again, when you talk about this 19 intersections and all the work that was done, why it matters, conditional rezoning of the site provides improvements in study of 18 to 19 intersections that wouldn't happen with a buy-right development. And this improvement, Commissioner Simpson, as you mentioned, it does impact existing conditions. It's just inevitable. If an intersection is functioning at a C, which is actually considered good in transportation standards, we can't guarantee that we only have to mitigate it back to a C. Very often, through improvements, it might go back to a B or even an A, making it better than what the existing condition is. And that's not uncommon when you're looking at mitigation for traffic improvements. Lisa also touched on the amount of open space. Why this matters? Conditional zoning increases the open space by 24 acres above what's required by right. Again, conditional zoning is just a tool in the toolbox to help us get something better than what's in the ordinance. There are some exhibits in here that show you the quality of amenities that we anticipate for the site. There are plenty of opportunities for them to be programmed by the community, but there's also the seven-acre park that we're planning to dedicate to the town, that you all will be able to dedicate to meet your current programming needs. We've included a variety of elevations. It's intended to show that there are single-family residences, conceptual elevations, the different style of architecture that's available. Shay Holmes is known for being a semi-custom home builder. They are proud of the fact that you can look at their communities and everything is a little bit different, has its own flair and style for a variety of home buyers. These are conceptual elevations of the residential cottages and some of the townhomes. We have rear-loaded townhomes as well as front-loaded townhomes. Again, that sort of speaks to the affordability in providing housing for all. We have some conceptual elevations of what the retail may look like at the front of our site. This is our front door as well, so we know how important it is to get the quality right. And we're going to continue to look for ways to incorporate elements and architectural details that give a nod to downtown Waxahaw. How do we incorporate details, architecture, materials that are reflective of the community? So I'm going to come back to this, the community, the conditional zoning benefits. At the end of the day, we have architectural standards that exceed ordinance requirements with no vinyl. We have extensive street connectivity with that major relief to the Providence and Cuthbertson Road intersection. We had more than eight community engagement opportunities. It's, again, the idea of creating housing for all. It's a place where it's not just for new home buyers, but it's for people who've lived in the community for decades and are looking for a different housing choice. We've got that 7.15 acre park, walkable amenities that do help us keep some of the trips off of Providence Road and Cuthbertson, and those 18 transportation study areas. In our response to planning board, I'm not going to read all of this to you. I think we've all been sitting here for a while. We are going to coordinate with staff to find a way to see if we can provide that multi-use path along one of our sides of the main road. We're going to work on the stormwater planning to do something that is environmentally sensitive to our connections. We are looking at making that Inverness connection a pedestrian access. It's going to be contingent upon the ability to get easements. You know, we can't go into someone else's property without coordinating with them. And so if it doesn't work out, we're going to do the best we can. In response to fuel inconvenience, it probably won't surprise all of you that that was one of the uses that was included in the traffic study. It certainly generated a lot of the trips and the reason for the traffic improvements. So we'd like to maintain that because it also is, it's not generating new trips. Most of us don't leave our house to go to the gas station. We're already on 16 and stopping on our way to and from work. So we'd like to consider maintaining that use. I'm going to go ahead and end here and back on the slide that shows you everything in a color view, and we're happy to answer any questions.
All right. Any questions from the board members? Pedro.
I just had a quick question. The frontage is going to be sidewalks on Providence?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a few questions.
All right, we'll go here first and then jump over there. Anne?
Sure. So I know everything will be phased out, and I know there had been kind of a lot of discussion and concern over schools. And what is your timeline? And I know it's all relative because you have, at least this might be Lisa's question, is we're nearing the end of 2023. So when would you anticipate, you know, if you go through the construction document pop and get water and sewer, when would you expect to maybe have a product that would be able to be sold, probably like three or four years from now?
I'm going to ask Zach Ducey with Shay Holmes to come up and let them speak about the process.
Sure.
Good evening, folks. My name's Zach Ducey, Director of Land Acquisition Shay Holmes. Yes, ma'am, to answer your question, 2026 is what we're forecasting for first vertical delivery of a home to start vertical construction.
Right. So by the time someone could move in with a CO, possibly 20?
2027.
2027.
Probably more realistic.
Probably like three to four years from now. And what is your, and I know, I think I wrote down here, your 482 units. What is your projections for sales per year? So, and I know what would be built out in phases, so.
Sure. We've got multiple phases, and Phase One's got multiple product types within those phases, within that phase, as well as the other future phases. So we're forecasting maybe up to 100 homes under construction per year after we get rolling in 2026, give or take, all subject to market conditions at the time.
So it sounds like if something started to get built in '26, '27, or start to sell in '27, you're looking to forecast maybe 100 homes per year, sales, probably, I guess, is a robust number?
Yes, ma'am, across multiple home product types.
Correct. So you're looking from '27, I don't know, another four years before it would be completed. And I know, like, here we had, like, Millbridge, it took 20 years to go from 2000 to where we are now. Lisa, I don't know, is there a way that you can send us the McKibben report? Because I really would like to see the forecasted data for the schools and the enrollments, just to see, because if they're adding anywhere, you know, 75 to 100 homes a year, what's the forecast capacity at the schools? Because I know that's a really big concern. So is there a way that we could, you could send that out to the board so we can look at that?
And just within the last year from when they have first applied, we got new data where the percentages are going down, and they are continuing to trend down, but I'll get you that information.
And I think, if I understand, the McKibben report is done regularly by the school board, and it forecasts 10-year projections and forecasts for enrollments for clusters and different things like that. Is that right?
Correct. Yep.
Okay.
Tracy.
Okay. I have a question about where the, it was previously the connection to where you're now changing it to a pedestrian pad, I guess. Is that supposed to be, is it a road that they are just blocking off and you can just walk through it? Could it be a potential future connection?
So when we initially started the project, there was basically a determination of trying to figure out if it was an ordinance-required street, meaning we had to make the connection to Summerlet because it stopped in their neighborhood. It was determined that it was not a network-required street, and thus, we didn't have to provide a connection to it. Ultimately, there was discussion about us still providing the opportunity for pedestrians to make a connection, so a sidewalk or a trail path up to Summerlet. We can only go to our property line, though. And so we would have to work with the Inverness community to see if that's something that they want. And that's the way we wrote it into the plan, that in the event we're not able to coordinate on this, we would not stub a sidewalk to their property line.
Okay.
Does that answer?
Yes. I mean, I was, I was just thinking more future, when Providence actually is widening, if it wouldn't be helpful to have that connection to go around the construction that's going to be happening on Providence. And so I didn't know if it could be a road that could be blocked off somehow and then opened if it was ever needed, so.
There was fairly strong opposition to any type of connection, but I'm sure we'd be happy to discuss if there was a right-of-way set aside or something along those lines. But there was fairly strong opposition to making the connection. We discussed the merits and the opportunities and are working in response to staff feedback and the community's feedback.
Okay. And then, so I understand the commercial would not be, would you be constructing the commercial? And then it just, there could be no certificate of occupancy until Providence is done, but you would be building?
Yeah. Yep. Correct. We can't get our first CO until the improvements are completed for the construction of the commercial phase.
Okay. But so the housing, when you were discussing the years that those would be starting to be sold, does that coincide then with the widening of Providence?
It coincides with all of the Phase One transportation improvements that Brady outlined. Basically, we take the number of homes and we build in a phase to say, we can only build this many homes and have to make these improvements in order to get that. And then in order to unlock the next phase, the next number of units, we have to do the next phase of improvement. So it's essentially, you can only unlock as many certificates of occupancy as you've made transportation improvements to align with those changes.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else on that? Lots of information. Again, looking at the complexities of doing a project like this and all the layers that we look at, I got to give it to all you guys, just to put together every phase, every step, every dialogue. And that wasn't done before. And that's some of the reasons that we're in the predicament we are in in several layers of this town. So it's nice to be able to move forward with the knowledge of this and certainly give the public an understanding as well. As you can see, we've sat here for the last hour or so, you know, learning this. This is what we do with every project that comes since at least this board's been in place. So it is not easy. It's not for the faint of heart. But every project that will come through this town from now on, no matter who the board is, will go through the same scrutiny. So be assured of that. Jason, you had one? I see the face.
Yeah, the average assessed values, approximate, of the homes.
Subject to change, of course, market conditions, looking price ranging, you mean home prices forecasted? Four hundreds upward, eight hundreds. Again, subject to change, market conditions.
And that's the range of product mix.
That's right. That's across the townhomes, cottage, traditional, single-family detached. Correct.
And the county's zoning allows for 1.8 per acre, right? And what we're talking about is 2.1, so approximately 26 additional homes, roughly.
Right. I mean, it's currently zoned R40, which is a 40,000 square foot lot. Their comp plan has it shown for one to two units per acre. But what matters is that front portion, that front 50 acres, that's high density, which includes apartments. So they could go way higher up front, less in the back. Just depends on the proposal, type of proposal they get.
Anne, go ahead. One other little tidbit about County R40. Encore was County R40 as well. That's what it was before it got rezoned.
Without the same mitigation that the town requires.
That's correct.
So if we were to consider the tax implications, what the town misses out on from the Encore, roughly $600,000 a year for the Encore one? And for this, for this one, when the numbers I ran, which were based off of 350,000 average assessed value, would be around $667,000 a year that the town could benefit from.
Well, and not only do you lose tax base, but you also look at the proximity. And when you have a call for service there, almost certain, unless there happens to be a deputy car right there at that moment in time, then we are the ones utilizing our resources to respond to that. And they're not in the town limits.
All right. Very good. Long session on this one. But again, if there's no further questions, whatever, Lisa, thank you very much. Thank you all for all your work in the presentation. It's a lot of layers, so I appreciate that. Gentlemen, the question, if you want to get together with it, not now, at the traffic engineer, you need to go take it outside? Yeah, please. I know that. I'm going there yet. Mr. Kraus, you have signed up for public comment on this one. Would you like to return to the podium?
No.
Okay. And gentleman in the back, is he still with us? Still gone? So those are the only two that had signed up. So we'll move on to the next portion of the public hearings. This is on the adoption of the Waxahaw 2020 Comprehensive Plan. Again, it's informational. So Mr. Blair, I think you're up on this one.
I'm Blair Israel, Senior Planner for Waxahaw for four years now. My background goes further back in Waxahaw, though. Back in 2010, I was here working for another organization that Waxahaw contracted with to do its previous pedestrian plan. So I was here from 2010 to 2012. So I've seen a lot of the change, you know, I'm aware of that. Anyway, so tonight, I'm presenting a comprehensive plan, which by its nature has a lot of information. But I know it already feels like a long night, and so we'll just be, we'll be presenting the highlights and take an overall look at the process and content. So, let's see. Okay. So simply put, a comprehensive plan is a community's collective statement on its future, and it includes an outline of steps to achieve it. It provides guidance to the town's boards, the planning board, elected board, its decision-makers regarding policy, capital improvements, and public programs. It's based upon a number of things. Public input through a variety of ways that I will outline in the next slide, you'll see. Previously adopted plans that are all included in the comprehensive plan and summary forms, they're all, you know, so these are the plans that we've looked at, and here are the highlights from those. Data from numerous sources, primarily, you know, when it deals with population, primarily the US Census, particularly the 2020, and also just an analysis of present and future needs. The comprehensive plan, being that it's comprehensive, it covers a wide variety of subjects. You can see a list there. And I think the way that the font gets translated, it's cut off the last one, which is land use. So I apologize if the graphics don't serve, you know, as they should. But anyway, land use is at the bottom of that list and one of the most important, as you might imagine. The project timeline is important to look at here because you get a chance to see, you know, how much of an effort this has been. I want to mention that this is a plan that has been done in-house without the reliance on outside contractors who don't know as much about the town, frankly. But it, of course, has used numerous different ways to collect, in this case, you can see the different ways we collect public information. The public input events, there's color coded there, you can kind of see what some of those events are. One of them you see in October of 2022, Autumn Treasures. We've also done it at 2023, Autumn Treasures, where we have a chance for people to just walk up and talk to us. And those have been very productive meetings. They've led to some of the focus groups that you see in the kind of lime green under that. Some of the different focus groups also included there are the public board input, which is substantial, both in the planning board and also from the Board of Commissioners. And we appreciate the kind of involvement that y'all have played in this. Also, there's been public input surveys, a number of different ones. The Waxahaw Citizens Survey was launched back in September of 2022. We got a ton of information from that. Also, the comp plan survey itself, and the, you can see where the Waxahaw Citizens Survey closed. But anyway, the, I want to add to this, of course, is that there's been opportunity for online input, and we have received a lot of responses to that. So that's been very helpful in piecing it all together. So, moving on. What area does this comp plan cover? You might see a shape there that, if you look at maps of Waxahaw, often you might think, well, how was that Waxahaw? It is Waxahaw in the navy blue part, that's the incorporated limit. But then you also see an area called the Joint Planning Area with Union County. We work with them very closely on those areas. Adelena is in that joint planning area that we've just been hearing a lot about. But there's also an extended planning area. And that is, first of all, I want to say that that matches, this is the study area that 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 matches, this is the study area that was also used in the 2016 Comprehensive Plan, and there's good reason for that. It, the, the southern terminus is the Waxaw Creek, and this, this, this area is included for analysis. We project that a lot of the land in this area would be, would probably annex into Waxaw, looking way into the future, 2040, which is the scope of this plan temporarily. So we have to, we want to consider, okay, what kind of planning do we want to do in that area? When, when there is a voluntary annexation that's made, we want our plan to address that area and say, okay, well, for instance, we have a planned trail in this area, so the developer has to build that trail. The plan is there to, to, to guide that process. You can see, too, that, that line, that green picture down at the bottom, if you look at the, the darkest green, that was basically the extensive Waxaw back in 2010, or 2000, and then 2010 added a lot more in the, in the medium green, and then recently, there's been more annexations that have kind of connected the town more. And you can see also, get a sense of the scale of this planning area as it's shown in the, the picture of Union County. So that gives you some idea of what area we're talking about. The goals for this area, when you look at the 2016 Comprehensive Plan, there is not a lot of change from the goals that were stated then. And the reason for that is because people have the same concerns, people have the same desires for the town, they certainly want to improve the traffic flow. We know that's like the biggest challenge that we face right now and has been for quite a while. We want to maintain the local downtown charm, we hear that again and again in different ways, but also increase opportunities for local commerce and employment, and that means more places to shop, more places to work, more space for businesses to move into, and improve walkability. And that means having connections, both by sidewalk, trails and such, but also improving the safety, particularly pedestrian safety on the roads. So what are some of the trends that we're looking at for the town? What do we see happening now and project into the future, even as far as 2040? These are just some of the highlights. Increasing development pressure, obviously, the region is growing, the region is growing very fast, and that's something that we truly can't do anything about. What we wanted to do is try to direct and manage the growth that is trying to come this way. But with that, unfortunately, there's an increase in housing costs, and, but of course, that generates a desire for more diverse types of housing. I think it's important to, it's important to consider, you know, who, who are we, who are these houses for? Think in terms of a family. You might start off in a, you know, a single-family type of situation where you have a young family coming in, moving to Waxaw, thinking this is a great place to raise kids. Eventually, those kids grow up, they go to school, they graduate, they want to go to work, they need to live somewhere where they work. Can they do that in Waxaw? And then as that family, as their children move on, that family becomes empty nesters, they perhaps reach retirement age, they're on fixed income, can they still afford, or do they want to try to pay for the same house that they have? Or try to move into something smaller, try to downsize? What choices do we have for them? What choices do we have for an elderly population that is growing by all, you know, which is obvious? So those are the things that we consider, those housing needs in the comprehensive plan. There's also, like I said, more desire for more employment opportunities, workspaces, new business space, and certainly desire for more parks, public amenities, and, you know, trails, active destinations and such. So just to give a brief view of what, how this plan is put together, this is, what I have here is just sort of a standard page in the plan where we deal with each of those subject matters that were shown in that earlier slide, the different subjects that are covered, and this is kind of how it's laid out. One of the things I want to stress about this plan, though, and that is in great contrast with the 2016 Plan, I counted up the pages of the 2016 Plan, it's about 250 pages. This plan is 52 pages, and that includes all the appendices, all the extra information that you find at the end of the plan. So it's an easy read. It is easy to get to the information you need. It's, I tend to think that this is not going to be something that's just going to sit on the shelf, it is going to be a guideline. So just to give a sense of what's in there, introductory explanation for each subject, some analysis of each subject, goals and strategies for each subject. You can see here on this page, there's a part, the dark area there that says goals. Those are the main goals for, in this case, utilities and services. The strategies for how to accomplish those goals, that's in the appendices, because that's a lot of information. But each subject, we, we have these different things, just to make it a quick way of looking at the subject matter, then you go to the appendices and say, okay, what are we going to do about it? What, what do we want to take on as an elected board, as a, as a town? What are the projects that, that will make a difference and help us achieve the goals that are talked about in this plan? So now we'll get into some key recommendations. This is a very important map in the plan because this is the map that's taken from the land use chapter. The land use chapter has a very similar page to what you saw previously. I just took the map out, and I also isolated a table there on the left. And what that, what that's about is what you're seeing there is the future land use map. It has a series of, it has different categories of land use, which is very common. And in this case, there, there are seven different ones, if I'm counting that correctly, yes. And in the table, you see each one of those land uses explained in terms of density, the purpose for that, how it's, how it's used. One that I'll point out as just an example is employment centers. You can see that jumping out at you in purple. What is an employment center? It's, it's an area of town that lends itself to attracting larger businesses or any kind of business that can come in and be a place where people can, can work and where, you know, business can be generated, tax dollars can be generated. You'll, you'll notice that there's one far down at the bottom, that's Jars. If anyone's familiar with the Jars here, that is an example of an employment center. So, let's see, I'll just move on. I'm trying to make it quick. Key recommendations also include conservation, development. And by that, what we mean is that this is something that we go into some detail about in, in the land use plan, because it is, it has great advantages in being a density-neutral type of development, where you can get the same number of units that you might have in, in a normal zoning, but you cluster those homes so that you can preserve the best of the land, the land that is, has the natural features that you want to preserve or that function well for stormwater and wildlife and such. So there's, there's a lot to be said about it, and so we do spend some time on that in the, in the plan. Other subject matter that we just, you know, haven't gone into in detail, but you can see here, three more maps representing three more sections. You can see the transportation map on the left, that's the vehicular transportation, and it's small, but it, when you take a look at that map, you'll see that the, the parkways are, are illustrated there. These, again, have been on the books for, they're certainly there in the 2016 Plan, and they're actually there before then. So this plan takes that steps further. The middle map is more pedestrian and bicycle-oriented transportation. It also includes equestrian trails that we recommend. So there's a lot of detail about each of those features, but that just shows it in the map. You can see that, when you think about trails, they're, they're linear elements, they tie open space together, they tie parks together, they, they bring people to destinations. But that linear, linear element is also very important when you consider the environmental and open space needs of, of the area. That map on the, on the far right looks more at the natural resource assets. There's an emphasis on green corridors because that serves the best in water quality protection, also habitat. So there's, there's a good bit of information about that in that chapter. So just a brief recap of the, of the process, you saw the, the earlier timeline, this is just the very end of it, where in August and September, we went through the Board of Commissioners two-by-twos meetings, it had lots of outside agency review, a long list of agencies that, that reviewed this plan. And then October Planning Board, tonight, we're at the BOC public hearing, and then two weeks from now, that would be the meeting for decision on adoption of the plan as scheduled. So, anyway, so I have the consistency statement in there, but that wouldn't be necessary until next meeting. And so right now, I just want to open up two questions.
All right, any questions, comments all the way around? We've all put in a lot of work on this thing the last couple, three years, and so this is a, certainly a culmination of all that. No other questions, thoughts? Jason or Tracy?
I have one question. What would be the benefit of some of those larger acreage sites, like the one that's, say, behind where Inverness is, I believe? We would be projecting that to be employment center. What would be the benefit of that over just leaving it like a R1?
I'm glad you asked because I really skimmed over the details of what an employment center is, but if I could go into a little more detail about it. Its principal use that we've featured and that is also described in the Land Development Code is high-tech manufacturing or research and development, where some warehousing, office parks, commercial kitchens. It can be a variety of things in different scales. One thing I want to stress, though, is that it's not a shopping center. It's not a commercial corridor type of development. It is, it has a whole different purpose. And these would go, these fit best in the large, underdeveloped parcels or undeveloped parcels located along existing or future transportation corridors and areas identified also in the Union County 2050 Comprehensive Plan. So this plan is very much in keeping with that plan, particularly when they talk about light industrial or any kind of employment. And really, what it comes down to is providing some kind of, providing high-quality local employment and also to broaden the municipal tax base and, and also to contribute to the local and regional road connectivity, because those developments can help build some of those roads that we need.
Jason, did I say you have a question?
I was just going to say, I think you did a wonderful job on this. It, it ties very tightly into the Union County's 2050 Plan. In fact, I went back and looked at the previous comprehensive plans from the county, and the consistent message is that Western Union County is really popular, and it's going to continue being popular for a while. When you, when you had that map up there, from the southernmost border of the town right now to the South Carolina border, I mean, how many miles are we talking about there?
It's, do you mean from 75 down to the southern?
Roughly nine, I think.
I don't even know if it's that much.
Yeah, undeveloped land, right?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. So there's quite a bit coming.
Yeah, but as you can see.
With or without the town? I mean, just to pretend Waxaw doesn't exist for a moment, growth is, it's going to happen.
Yeah, it's, it's, the, the thing is, is that the growth does come, and so the question is, can we, can we help shape where that development is? Or if we take a more passive approach and say, we're just going to zone everything, you know, to, to one-acre lots or whatever, that doesn't slow down the growth, it just spreads it out. And by spreading it out, that means that per person, per household, you're going to need more roads, you're going to need more infrastructure in general, you do more harm to the environment, you cause, you have more impervious areas, so more flooding. By managing that growth, shaping the growth, trying to put it where it needs to be, and then keeping other areas more pristine, as is exemplified in this map where you can see rural agricultural, low-density residential, in large swaths, in the areas where it really needs to be, then that is smart planning. And that helps guide that growth, because again, as a town, we're not going to, we're not going to stop that growth. It's just going to go maybe around us into Union County, and that we have to deal with the same traffic coming through town. So if we guide that growth in the right way, we can, we can more quickly get Parkway built, which will give us, you know, relief in our pinch point there at 16 and 75. I don't know if any of y'all were downtown at the event that happened, that was alluded to earlier with this, that Jeff was talking about, and, and what happened with the CSX Railway and how we had to cordon off certain roads and all to, to route traffic around that intersection. If you were down there at that intersection, be amazed, it's like, wow, where's all the traffic? Where are all the cars? I mean, obviously, they're being routed around. But the point is, is that with a Parkway, it accomplishes a lot of that same thing, where you have the trucks not going right through downtown as you're trying to eat out or whatever, you know? You have all the north-south traffic that's, comes through Waxaw, but then, again, doesn't come directly from the residents of Waxaw, it's just through traffic. Parkway helps, of course, alleviate that problem for our downtown so that we can keep that downtown charm that, that everyone wants. So it's part of the answer.
No, I appreciate that. It's very good.
Well done. Any other comments, thoughts? Pedro?
Just one thought, comment. As we look at that map, we have 75 and we have 16 going up to the north, commercial along it, but as I look at that map, there is no 16 going southbound. There is no roadway that's going to feed or, or help or, or act as a 16. I remember back in 2019, I asked the mayor, how long do you think it'll be before the center of town is no longer the center of town? If you look forward probably 20 years, let's say, will there be another 16 going southbound, and will that intersection become the new center of town? I think it's important for everybody that's involved in this to take a look at that before we make the mistakes of the past again.
Well, there is a lot of north-south traffic, and it may not be on 16 once you get south of 75, but it's on other roads that are carrying a lot of traffic right now. The point, the, the important thing in my mind is, is that all that traffic going to be channeled through our downtown in the 16 and 75 intersection? Or are we able to take at least that through traffic and take it around town? That way, we can, we can focus on having, on, on making downtown, preserving what's great about downtown, adding where it needs to be added to in order to stay within that character. But then that, adding to, what that does is that, that helps Waxaw be that destination that people come to the town for, or they move to the town for, or they remain in the town for. Waxaw has something very special there. This would help preserve that. Now, when you're talking about, you know, our center of activity or whatever, there may be more commercial activity that happens elsewhere, there may be more corridor, what we call corridor commercial, that is more automobile-oriented. As far as like the walkable downtown that people love, that will help. This, this plan helps make that or preserve that and, and keep that in perpetuity. The Parkway is essential to making that happen. I think that's obvious to everybody, so.
Sure, no, I absolutely agree. I, I just think that we need to start planning ahead.
Absolutely.
And it might change that slightly, but to be attached to that one particular point and not plan ahead and see that as that, you know, Parkway extension comes online, it's also important to keep the fact that at some point, they're going to need a 16 on the south side, whatever, whatever it is.
Yeah, you can get a better look at the, at the, I understand, the vehicular map here, the vehicular transportation. You see the Parkway in blue or what's, you know, currently, the proposed or most likely, and then it connects into existing roads down here. That would eventually be widened or see improvements themselves, but not in the sense of becoming commercial corridors themselves, because that land down there is, at least on our land use plan, shows it being more preserved and more of a rural character.
There, there has been consideration for this, again, in the overall vision, which has to be accepted by the county of a vision, how do you get down to the state line? At one time, 16 was going to come through some of the older neighborhoods and down Providence until you couldn't get to those locations, being that you had to come around the town and get around. That's one of the reasons that we had some of the projects to the south take the pressure off the downtown and reconnect. There is an alignment that picks up about a mile and a half south of the Waxaw-Monroe and 16 intersection, that picks it up, and it will take traffic down to the state line. But again, that's got to be a collaborative effort with the county, and when we went to the county with that, they simply stated they don't have a vision, and that's the problem.
Jeff, I saw you, T N.
Jeff, I saw you tining up over there.
Thank you, Mayor. Just as, since we're on the, the subject of, of the Parkway and the importance of that, I can't stress that enough. And just to go back real quick to our origin/destination study, the intersection of 16 and 75, we know through that study that most of that traffic is heading to the county in Mineral Springs. That is not Waxaw traffic. So that's something that is important to, to point out, but yet then we have a jurisdiction right next to us that is undermining us, I guess, quite frankly, just to be blunt about it.
For more than one time.
Yes, that's right. But it's, it's essential. It's been on the books for thirty years.
Thirty years, 1992.
More than thirty years, and I do understand, I mean, that if you have a road that's this planned to go through, I understand people's reaction to that. You have to take careful consideration of that. If you choose another spot, like somebody would, like, well, let's go not here, let's go over there. Well, then you just put yourself in the same spot there, because those people will say the same thing. This has been on the books for a very long time, so it shouldn't be very surprising.
If I could add just one more piece to this presentation, I was asked in one of the letters that I received over online, what are the differences between this plan and our previous comprehensive plan of 2016? And there are a few obvious ones, you know, again, ours is 52 pages, the, the previous one was actually about 252 pages, and we produced ours in-house. But what I was struck by, going through it in more detail, taking a last look, is how similar these plans are. And now, I, I just want to illustrate that, just reading a few quotes, because in the last plan, they asked people to say, I want my Waxaw to, fill in the blank. So here's some of those statements that I, that they received. I want my Waxaw to grow but maintain character, or to stay charming, or some of them said to stay small. I want my Waxaw to preserve historic buildings, to have a vibrant downtown, to have more parks, bigger parks, to be a walking town, a walkable town, to add hiking trails, to be more kid-friendly, to have more road safety and better crosswalks, to double up lanes on Providence or widen, widen 16. That process is still underway. To have a bypass, to finish the Waxaw Parkway, to end traffic bottlenecks, to bridge over the railroad tracks, to build a 75 overpass, to build a new library, which is almost completed now, to grow in a plan-managed fashion, to support the equestrian community, to shop local and to have more retail and to be a destination. So when I read those quotes, I thought, we're doing that with this plan as well, or at least, that's what this plan is, is pointing us towards as well. How it shapes out is, is up to the decision-makers now and in the future.
Lance?
Blair, I just wanted to mention, in the comprehensive plan, I know we talked a lot about traffic and vehicular, but this plan really addresses park, uh, trails and sidewalks and bicycle paths and other modes of transportation, which is not just vehicles. So we're making a conscious choice or plan here to, to look at other alternatives and, and for healthy lifestyles and for other things.
Yep, that's what that center map's all about and the chapter that it's in.
And so, I know we, we really emphasize a lot about traffic, but if we can also find alternative methods to get people moving around, that will also help burden necessarily the vehicular piece and keep people safe.
Jason?
So, Blair, you reminded me of a few other things and Jeff's comments as well. So the traffic that we're seeing coming through town today is roughly, we say, 19,000 cars a day? Roughly?
Where's our Kim Lee Horn speaker?
Yeah.
It depends on where you are on 16. Up in the northern part, through the middle part of town, yes, it is that number. Once you get to downtown, and Matt might have to help me a little bit, I might be a little off, but I think the number going through the intersection of downtown is around 10,000, something in that range. Okay, I'm a little short, so over, over 11,000.
Right. And, and the community's aggravated with, with that amount of traffic?
Well, especially when the connectivity is poor and everybody has to get out on 16 to get anywhere.
So that's my point.
Yes.
And so, add in a four-lane, expanded 16, that terminates at the CVS.
At the Parkway.
Right.
Yeah.
Have you run some estimates on numbers of what the car, what the volume would go to?
Well, I mean, I'm standing on the shoulders of giants for that, so I would have to refer to Matt or to Kim Lee Horn to get into those numbers. But one of the things I want to stress is that we, the connectivity, and the connectivity that was shown in Adelina, especially if that road actually did connect, would do, would, would be an enormous help for the town and just people having to deal with that 16 traffic, especially if they just want to get to one other little place in Waxaw. So anyway, but Matt's got more to say.
As Matt comes up, I'll just point out to that point, that there, there are a lot of, of stub-out streets all over town. I mean, that's, that's good planning, that's good engineering, that's what you learn in the textbooks to do. But then you get into the reality where you have situations like Adelina, people have lived there, or that community there next to Inverness, they've lived there for some time, they don't want to have that connectivity. And I think in this particular case, you're able to make that work, because the TIA addresses that and says that it does work. So you are able to make something work out there to the benefit of, of the citizens of what they, they want there. Is that what you should do regularly? Probably not, but you run into it time and time again, and that's one of the big challenges that we have.
So your question was on what, what sort of percentages would we see if, if the bypass were realized?
Estimated number of the volume of traffic. And, and don't, 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 don't think about the, the bypass at the moment.
Okay.
Right? So we've got 12,000, 11,000, 12,000 cars that are coming through town right now.
Okay.
Right? You add in an expanded 16, four lanes, coming right into town. I mean, more, adding more lanes is gonna bring more traffic. I mean, that's, that's obvious.
They'll, they'll get there quicker.
Yeah.
Right, the travel times will be reduced.
Yeah.
And, and, but if there's no more capacity, then, then that will aggravate the congestion.
But as far as estimates?
In terms of, I mean, it, it basically just increases your queuing at the only relief valves there are to get out in, in any other direction. That's why I really don't contemplate any improvement without a bypass in, in any direction, whatever we can get. And I think we see the behaviors of drivers when you come downtown and you, you see the brake lights, 116, you got Church Street, right? That's, that's the next best choice, and that, all that does is still get you at 75. And then, so again, that's why the purpose of our, of our planning is to be able to just, if the trips don't have to be downtown, get them where they're going without forcing them through a place that can't handle them. And, and we've seen this coming for some time, and we've tried to be the voice of reason and responsibility with our, with our partners, and that's, that's not being played out in the, in the timeline that, that we think is really reasonable. And, and the expectation is to be able to have these in place before, people just don't want to be downtown, period, for downtown's sake, though they still have to go north and south through that regionally, because that's the only alternative that there is. If you were looking for a number, I heard it stated once before, that it could eliminate the traffic in the downtown area itself, the 16-75 connection, by as much as 75%. That would again, give the ability for our residents to get to the downtown, to have a five o'clock dinner down there and not be frustrated by the traffic. Most of the traffic goes actually around the town, or goes, today it goes through the town and goes either to the south and goes down into the county and into South Carolina, or it goes to the east towards Mineral Springs and Monroe. And as they add more traffic over there, we get the burden.
Goes right through town.
And, and I know there's been some discussion about a Parkway maybe only being two lanes, but I know it'd be right-of-way for up to four lanes to any of the direction, but wouldn't having two lanes be better than having no lanes?
Yeah, absolutely. And, and that's, we're trying to work with the system that we're given at any time. There, there have been reasons before that we weren't getting the prioritization against other projects in the state mechanism, and, and as that changes and we get more familiar with it and understand where our shortfalls are, one of the things is the, the extensive cost of the right-of-way and of course, the construction. And so, if, if we can reduce the construction cost, that, that increases the cost-benefit ratio that they're looking at, that then elevates it against other projects. And so, that's why we're proposing, okay, well, let's not do four. If four is gonna burden our ability to get it improved, let's do two. We're still saying, let's get four in right-of-way, because right-of-way is one of the biggest problems anyway, so we wouldn't shoot ourselves in that way. But again, we have, within our own town limits, we have the ability with, with our partners or the development community to have that built and the, the right-of-way provided as at no cost. And then, so that goes into the mix as well. The problem is, is, is when DOT had their funding shortfalls a couple of years ago, that stacked everything up, it reshuffled everything, and when we were previously just one down on the line of getting funded, now we're, we've got other projects in front of us, because they should have already been done, and they're not. And, and that's where the continued frustration comes in, as, as much as we're working to try and get us on that list and say, okay, it's funded, we now can, can look to a future that, that includes a Parkway, but we're, we're, we're like back to square one, and it's, it's super frustrating. And we should also be aware of the consideration of the CSX NC DOT rail project that is underway, which is the extended rail spur to the west. And so, we will get an overpass over the highway, over the railroad track, inside the next two and a half years. Correct. So, and that's, that's a helms road one. Yeah, and I think we'll see how many people will change their behaviors, whether or not it's actually helpful to their route on paper. I think you'll see a lot of people using that, because the alternative to go through 16 and take that left and continue south is, is, is not there in the, in the current traditional sense. If we don't get to do those traffic improvements, Parkway being specific, then everything that's built in the county will come through our intersection, which could increase that frustration tenfold. And then, then they're still happening. I mean, there, there's still construction going on out there that's, only has the opportunity to go through Waxaw. That's right. That's true. All right, thanks, Matt. Appreciate that. Any other thoughts and comments from the commissioners, anyway? All right, we had, Mr. Kraus had one sign up again. I'll let you have the microphone again.
I'll read my two sentences here in a second, but I did want to just, on a personal note, say I, I did submit comments, a two-page email, 10 points. I know you'll be shocked, but I was shocked to get a response back from Mr. Israel within a few days with an itemized response to each and every one of my comments. So I just appreciate the process, I appreciate Blair's specific effort as well, so thank you for that. I just wanted to, first of all, express my support for the approval of the Waxaw 2040 Comprehensive Plan, but I did want to note a couple of things that I, I felt we needed to address somehow. I'd like to see a more aggressive and explicit commitment to protecting air, water, and soil for current and future generations. I understand that some of that may be addressed in the Land Development Code, which I haven't read, but I, I feel like it could be in the, in the comprehensive plan or in the broad vision as a high priority as well, and I didn't see it there. And then, secondly, I'd also like to see an explicit commitment to really unparalleled, standard-setting, local government transparency as a core differentiator about Waxaw, about Waxaw's character, and it could be reflected in capital investments and processes and technology to really break some boundaries, make it easy, really easy for citizens to be seen, to be heard, to hold our government officials accountable in a way that, as I say, is standard-setting. So that would be a, a second thing I'd love to see become part of a core vision. Thank you.
Appreciate that. Thank you. All right, Mr. Evola, I think you're up again, if you will.
Again, good evening, Mayor, Commissioner, Town Staff. And I just want to start this off real quick by saying thank you to Town Staff for all of the hard work that you do for our community. It's very much appreciated. Again, my name is Michael Evola, I live in the Quellin subdivision, I'm a resident in the town of Waxaw, most of the chair of the Town of Waxaw Parks Cultural and Recreation Advisory Board. I rise tonight to speak in support of the 2040 Comprehensive Plan. As a 20-year resident of this community, you know, I'm ecstatic that the initiatives laid in this plan are very well thought out and take a proactive, not reactive approach toward addressing growth and the present and future needs of our community. Through strategic planning, many goals related to infrastructure, parks and recreation, economic development, environmental conservation, and housing give me hope for the future of this community as a young person and my place in it. As a town, we should be striving to cultivate an inclusive culture where everyone of every demographic and every stage of life has the opportunity, not just to survive, but thrive here in Waxaw. We must not be exclusive, pick and choose who can and cannot live here. Everyone is welcome to live, work, and play in this community. You know, as a 26-year-old at the start of his career working for this county, you know, I served some of the most economically disadvantaged people in economic services at, at Health and Human Services. You know, I should be able to establish my own roots in this community, having lived here this long, after, you know, living with my parents for the last 20 years. However, at present, you know, we're not accommodating everyone's needs in this community. But that's why I support this plan, because it accommodates everyone's needs. It ensures, this is, it ensures that everyone has the opportunity to establish their own roots here in Waxaw. It maintains the small town and historical characteristics of our community that we love, everybody loves about our community, while simultaneously addressing the present and future needs of our community. These are not mutually exclusive concepts, don't let anyone tell you that we can't do it, because we can. Failing to plan is planning to fail, and we must ensure that we have, that we're being inclusive for everyone when we make decisions, that we must ensure everyone has a seat at the table, we must ensure everyone's needs are met. I've lived here most of my life, and I can say Waxaw's best days are not behind us. I think we can all agree that despite experiencing some growing pains, which we're not the only community doing so, Waxaw has evolved and gained a lot of progress over the last several years, which again, makes me hopeful for the future. And that's why I support this plan. And I would ask everyone, do you want your kids and your grandkids to have a place in this community? Do you want to ensure that they have the same opportunities that you did? Do you want them to be able to establish their own roots in this community? And if you do, if the answer is yes, then support the 2040 Comprehensive Plan. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Michael. Well said. All right, any other thoughts, comments? Because if there are none, I'm gonna ask for a motion to close this public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing.
All right, motion's up, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, unanimous. All right, we're gonna move quickly to old business. Imagine that. So this is the text amendment for the neighborhood meeting requirements. We adjust things like this periodically, and here's one of them.
Yes, sir. I am Janet Pirano, I'm a Planner Two here in Waxaw, and I am here this evening for the decision on the text amendment regarding the neighborhood meetings. The petition is a request by the Town of Waxaw Planning Department to amend Section 3.3.1B, Neighborhood Meeting Requirements, in the Town's Land Development Code. At the public hearing, we talked about the purpose of neighborhood meeting, which is to broaden the opportunity for the applicant to collaborate with the community on a project prior to submitting a conditional zoning or special use permit application. We went through the proposed changes in detail at the public hearing, so I'm just gonna go quickly through these tonight. The applicant shall hold a minimum of one meeting, the need for additional meetings will be determined by the zoning administrator. The initial meeting shall occur after the pre-application meeting and no more than 60 days prior to application submittal. Meetings will be structured according to the Neighborhood Meeting Requirements policy, which will be provided to the applicant at their pre-application meeting. Notification letters and signage have been standardized. A report of the neighborhood meeting must be submitted with the formal application, and this is the applicant's meeting, staff and town officials will not be present. Staff and town officials will not be present. This is the policy document that will be reviewed at the pre-application meeting. It gives the applicant details about what is expected of them in regard to their neighborhood meeting. There are two changes that were requested by the board during the public hearing. One is that invitations will be mailed at least 14 days, but not more than 30 days prior to the meeting. Previous to that, it was 10 days and 25 days. And there was some discussion about recording the meetings, so staff added language stating that the recordings of the meetings are encouraged and that any recording should be included as part of the meeting report. Staff created a standard and a template for applicants to follow for signage and notices. Notices will be sent to owners and occupants of properties that lie within 300 feet of the project site, as well as any homeowners' associations. And notification letters and signs will be approved by staff prior to mailings or postings. The meeting requirements will include a list of necessary agenda topics. Probably the most important is that there is time allowed for feedback from attendees and an explanation of how that feedback will be used. And lastly, the meeting report will be a required component of the formal application packet. The Planning Board reviewed the text amendment on September 21st and unanimously recommended approval. We held the public hearing on October 24th. The board had requested those two changes that I talked about, and there were no public comments. And with every text amendment, we are required to adopt a land use plan consistency statement. Staff has provided a draft statement. And the requested action this evening is a motion to approve the text amendment petition and the reasonableness and consistency statement as provided. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
So we've looked at this one several times, made some amendments to it. So questions for our presenter, Ann?
Question that I have, so, just so that we're all clear, so if an applicant comes in and they do a community meeting, they have 30 days to submit an application, and if 30 days elapsed, they have to start over and do it again?
They will have 60 days to submit the application, and yes, if they do not submit within that 60 days, they would need to go back and have another neighborhood meeting?
So if they had a community meeting, they have 60 days to formally submit their application, or they start all over and have to do it again?
That's correct.
Any other questions? All right, I think our presenter's looking for a motion. Do you want to read it from that?
Oh.
All right, who wants to make the motion?
All right, I'll make a motion to approve text amendment petition TA 009-2023 is presented, including the following land, oh, I'm sorry, I read the wrong one.
Like an old business number one.
Okay. Including the following land use plan consistency statement. The text amendment request consisted with comprehensive plan and the future planning goals of the Town of Waxaw, and is reasonable and in the public interest, as it will allow the community to provide direct feedback to developers on proposed projects, parts, and middle.
All right, thank you for that. All right, that motion is up. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All the way around. Thank you. Thank you, Janet. Appreciate all the effort going back and forth on this and getting these little changes made. So again, wonderful staff. All right, we're going to move quickly to new business. This is a first reading of some proposed changes. This is talking about parking on North Providence. So Mr. Matt, welcome back to the podium.
Thank you. Well, I think everybody's here for this one, I'm pretty sure. This is the biggest one on the agenda, so I'll go very slowly. Now, this is a very simple one before us tonight, and basically, it's just to introduce the potential to sign North Providence Street for no parking on both sides of the street. And this would be from Blythe Mill Road to Howie Mine Road. Again, it's a ditch section street. It's really not appropriate for parking on the street, and we know with the, I think we've had events before where people have tried to use that as an option, and we just want to make sure that we go ahead and ordinance it so that it can be enforced, and certainly as construction is ramping up, we want to ensure that that doesn't interfere with the residential use as well. And so again, the action is to either provide some feedback or go ahead and consider it upon the second reading to approve. Any questions?
All right, any questions? This is again informational, first reading. No questions? Matt, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Next one, Ms. Ashley, I think you're up. You awake back there?
All right, this is the first reading of the proposed ordinance, is talking about what we were talking about a little bit earlier on some. This is informational again, establishing the downtown Waxaw social district and what that means or not.
Absolutely. So I'll have Chief Wilson join us in here as well. So I just want to introduce myself. I'm Ashley Knoll. I'm the Business Development Director for the Town of Waxaw. I help manage our Main Street program in downtown in partnership with our Downtown Waxaw Association. I work with our downtown business owners to help promote downtown, as well as help grow their businesses. So tonight, we are going to talk about social districts. We're going to go through what they are, how they came about, why they were started, and then how this could be implemented in our downtown area. So some background, a social district is a designated area where someone can consume alcohol that is sold by an ABC permitee that is within that area. This is a bipartisan bill that was passed in September of 2021, with updates that were then approved in July of 2022, all bipartisan efforts at our state level. It's also something that the North Carolina Main Street Program, as well as our North Carolina Downtown Development Authority advocated for at the state level. Originally, it was used as an economic recovery initiative for our small businesses during and after COVID, but it really turned into a great economic generator for our downtown districts across the state. There are currently 46 districts across the state of North Carolina, and they're in downtown areas and Main Street areas that are really big and small. We've got communities that are as small as 1,200, 2,000, 4,000 population, all the way up to big cities like Raleigh and Durham. We have also seen a lot of success in mid-sized Main Street communities, so our fellow Main Streeters across the state. Some of those kind of nearby that are similar to us would be Albemarle, Lenore, Statesville, and Salisbury. And I've worked a lot with their Main Street directors to kind of get some feedback and see how it's worked there. So as I mentioned, this has been a really great initiative to approve economic vitality in downtowns. It's really, it was intended to help businesses bounce back after the pandemic, but a lot of downtowns have seen really great growth in business and in economic development in their district. Social districts are really just another tool in our toolbox as we encourage economic revitalization and vibrancy in our downtowns. A lot of our Main Street friends across the state have also seen an increase in new businesses in their downtown, increases in foot traffic, and increases in private investment in downtown since starting their social districts. We, right now in Waxaw, have more than 60 businesses that are waiting to open a business in downtown Waxaw, and starting a social district could really encourage even more vibrancy in downtown and even more private investment. So we have tested this district at two events here in town, but we've really been in conversation about the social district for more than two years. As I mentioned, this was passed at the state level in September of 2021. And late September that year was when we started having conversations with business owners, as well as the Board of Commissioners. Our first decision was really to kind of do some more research, see how this worked in other communities, and then bring that back to the board retreat. So then in January 2022, I came to your board retreat and we talked even more about the social district. And at that time, our decision was to move forward with a smaller event. If you guys remember then, we were going to do a small event in May of 2022 called Taste of Waxaw. We had gone through the entire process, the first reading and the second reading, and it was approved, but we ended up having to cancel that event just because we didn't have enough vendors that were participating in it. So at that time, our Economic Vitality Committee and I really kind of regrouped and continued to do more research and follow social districts kind of across the state, just keeping an eye on things. As we began that work on the TAP project on East North Main Street downtown, and that was when we really started to think, hey, this might be a really good place to test this at a small event. It shows off that effort that we really put into placemaking on East North Main, and we had, it gave us a really good chance to kind of test signage, to test trash, to, you know, test how that would work with the businesses there. So during that downtown plaza grand opening, that was held on August 4th, we had two ABC permitees that were on that street and then five retail businesses. We were able to increase foot traffic. It was about 90% more than an average Friday during that event, so a lot more than you would see on a regular Friday, so a minor stress test. Our ABC permitees and non-permitees said that there was an increase in sales over their normal Friday as well. And then our police department gave feedback for that, and we had no major issues during or after the event that were reported. We also did an online survey for our attendees and then collected feedback from the businesses in person and via email, and had no reported issues there as well. We then began recapping that event with our board and our staff, and decided that our next test could be Autumn Treasures. The reason we chose Autumn Treasures is because that's our biggest event that we do throughout the year. And we thought that that would be a really good stress test for a social district. It's the most people will ever have gathered in downtown. We could test a full map of the social district. We would also have crossing guards and extra police presence since it was an event, and that would give us a really good stress test, but also a safe space to stress it. It would give us a really good idea of what issues could come up. We ended up having eight ABC permitees that sold beverages during that event, and we had retail shops that were accepting drinks throughout downtown, too. So we did decide prior to that event, the way that we would measure success of the Autumn Treasures event was by event attendance, sales and business feedback, attendee surveys, and then police department feedback. That goal for that success was determining if this is a successful event, this is something we could do permanently in downtown. So we did measure that foot traffic, so we did have 65% more foot traffic than an average Saturday, and 130% more than an average Sunday. And that's not to say that we're saying that that foot traffic was increased for the social district. It wasn't. It was increased because of the event. We measured that mostly to see what kind of traffic issues we would have on an average day. So if we're not seeing issues when we're having double the people downtown, we're probably not going to have issues on a normal Friday or Saturday night either. We also collected the police department feedback and had no issues there. Our biggest piece that we learned is that we need to have the businesses stop selling drinks and containers 30 minutes prior to closing. So that, we saw a lot of those cups out on the street once the district closed, and if we stopped that selling a little bit earlier, that will stop some of that. We also collected business feedback after the Autumn Treasures event. And we put together an online survey for businesses after all of our events, and then we specifically asked for feedback on the social district. And we received 19 responses. 14 of those were people that were selling or allowing drinks into their business. All of those comments were either positive or neutral on how that district went for them. Some of the specific feedback we got from businesses in that survey was that it improved traffic on the south side, and this is an issue we typically have during our special events. We can't close NC 75, and so our south side doesn't really feel the love sometimes during those events. So those businesses did get to see an increase of traffic. It also encouraged more shopping at our local businesses instead of just at those event vendors. One of our businesses even said it allowed for more name recognition and awareness because people were allowed to walk around more with their beverage. We have heard a lot from our downtown businesses this year that sales have been down. I would say that a lot of that is due to inflation, but also due to construction. We had East North Main Street close down for three months during the spring, one of their busier times of year for foot traffic. One of our business owners did say in regards to the social district that anything the town can do to support our business owners should be done at this time. On Friday, I also sent out an email to our businesses that are within the district to see who would want to participate in a downtown social district, and then how they would want to participate. So as of today, we've had 17 responses from our downtown businesses. Five of those are ABC permitees that would be selling beverages in the district. 11 of those would allow beverages inside of their restaurant or their retail business. So that's ABC permitees and non-permitees, that's 11 that would allow drinks in and out. And then there were six that said they did not want to have beverages within their business. We do have about 63 businesses that are in that district, so we definitely have a ways to go. We're about, was that about a third of the way there, a little under a third of the way there? However, a lot of those businesses are upstairs offices, so they were included on that email list, but they're not necessarily going to participate in the same way that a first-floor business would. One of the biggest concerns I've heard from businesses since we've started having this conversation two years ago is the liability. There's a lot of liability for businesses that serve alcohol, and they want to make sure that a social district isn't going to allow extra liability on them. So what I've learned through my research is that whether you're social districting or not, so whether you have a cup in your hand or not, pedestrians and drivers still have to follow all traffic laws. So if someone is walking downtown and they jaywalk, whether they have a cup in their hand or not, they're still jaywalking, and that's still against the law. If a car were to hit a pedestrian, even if it were alcohol-related, whether there's a cup in their hand or not, there's an entire process that that would go through, so it's not adding any additional liability on our businesses for that to happen. Businesses will also maintain their normal alcohol management, making sure that people aren't being overserved, and this is something that our businesses are really diligent about and have gotten really serious about over the last few years. Most of them have cameras to make sure that if something were to happen, they were covered to ensure that they're not over-serving their customers. So any issues that would happen in downtown with vehicles or pedestrians would really just be dealt with as a traffic or a pedestrian citation. And holding a cup isn't likely to change your behavior or your adherence and laws. So then for event feedback, after the Autumn Treasures survey, we also created a survey, or after the Autumn Treasures event, we created a survey to survey any of the attendees that attended. A lot of the feedback we got from there was that they liked the more relaxed approach. They thought that it could increase tourism and community fellowship, and they thought that there was a lot of confusion if it's limited to events. I think that's a good point. So one of the biggest pieces of feedback we've gotten from police is that there's a lot of confusion when we're just testing social districts at events. It's really confusing for our customers. They're able to drink one weekend, but they're not able to drink the next weekend, or they were able to drink at this last event, but they're not able to drink at this upcoming event. That has caused a lot more enforcement issues for our officers after events as well. Another concern I've heard a lot about is safety. We have two major highways in downtown that we just heard have a ton of vehicles that go through a day. And from the 46 districts that are across the state, they have not seen any increase in safety or public disturbances in downtown. Instead of people chugging a beer or a cocktail at one place before they go to the other place, what they're really seeing is people taking that beer, sipping it as they walk to the other place, or as they sit outside, or as they go shopping. It allows for people to sit and enjoy their beverage outside on that really cool plaza that we created without putting that heavy responsibility on our police department. I did also have a conversation today with a I did also have a conversation today with the downtown director in Salisbury. I specifically asked our, our other main street directors across the state with social districts if there was anyone who had a major intersection in downtown like we did. Salisbury does have a state route that goes through downtown and an intersection that sees upwards of twenty thousand cars per day. They've had a district since July 1st of 2022 and they've had no issues with safety or the police at that time because of the district. So as I mentioned earlier, social district or not, our pedestrians and our drivers still have to follow those traffic laws. I've had other conversations with, with directors this week across the state. Our, our neighbor over in Monroe echoed similar feedback and they have had no safety issues. People stay on the sidewalks and the businesses are monitoring their consumption and following the normal ABC laws. Our director friend up in Statesville, they also have a North Carolina highway route running through downtown, which she said is even busier right now because of the I-77 construction. They also have had no pedestrian issues due to the social district. So with that said, pedestrian safety is always something that's really important to us in downtown. We want to make sure that people can walk and feel safe as they're, as they're walking through the district. But that doesn't, that isn't going to change with a social district. The data does not say that pedestrians are any less safe with a social district. And, and that's, we have forty-six communities that we're getting that data from. One of the other concerns that I've talked with a resident about is trash. We are aware that with a social district, it can increase your trash. So our design committee is looking at the location of all of our trash cans downtown. So we're doing a trash audit currently to see where our trash cans are located and is that a good place for them and is there a better place we can move them? Additionally, we will add cans at the exit of the district as well. So there's an easy place for, for people to drop their cups in. One of their big, their big projects this year, the design committee is really focused on this theme of keeping Waksaw beautiful and making sure that downtown stays clean and pristine. So that we're really focused on limiting that litter due to the social district. Dex, is there anything she wants to say?
So, so this is, this has been a long time coming with getting to this point. So I think from all the feedback that I'm hearing, not all of it, but a lot of the feedback I'm hearing, people think that this just started yesterday and we haven't really looked into anything as for the safety of the people as well as the burden that's going to be on the PD. So what we did to start with, when we, when we did the first social district during the TAP project, at that time, I was like, look, I don't like this, I don't like that we're doing this small test run. And I, I think I was correct, you know, in the, after doing that test run, it went to, everybody's leaving the bars with drinks, just like I thought it would happen. After the Autumn Treasures event, what happened? The same exact thing. So, well, I could drink last weekend, why can't I drink this weekend? Why can't I carry my drink outside now? So our real position is it's either all or nothing. So we do it full-time or we do it none at all. Because the problem we're seeing is when you, when you do it at events only, it's very confusing for the, for the population out here. So, once I talked to Ashley about this, and I'm still of the, of the opinion that carrying a drink in your hand doesn't change anything except for if I go to a bar with my wife who doesn't like beer and I go to Dream Chasers and she says, look, I'm ready to go to Cork and Ale, you need to pack up. Well, I'm going to have to chug that beer to go to the next place, which is going to make me more intoxicated in the beginning because now I'm chugging a beer rather than sipping that beer. So I'm going to get more intoxicated before I go to that next place wherever my wife's going to drag me to. So, but if I'm going to cross through a crosswalk, if I'm going to cross at sixteen, seventy-five, wherever it may be, and I'm crossing on that crosswalk, is it going to change my behavior with a beer in my hand rather than chugging that beer before I leave the establishment? No, it's, I, I think in my opinion that the beer in my hand is not going to alter my steps across the street, nor whether a car is coming or not, that I would have to say, hey, okay, well, I'm holding a beer, I should just race across the street without even looking. I, I don't understand that aspect. I spoke with Monroe Police Department and this was approximately two months ago when we were beginning the testing and said, hey, what have you seen? This was probably fifteen months in to their having a permanent social district. So I spoke to Monroe PD and they, I said, what have you seen? Have you seen any uptick in crime? Have you seen any uptick in people overindulging in alcoholic beverages because you have a social district? No, they have not seen any other issues, just like we didn't see any issues at either event. So then I called, or I didn't call yesterday, I had Deputy Chief Cohen call again yesterday because I was a little loopy from surgery. So Deputy Chief Cohen again, called again yesterday and spoke with the, the command staff over there again. Hey, we just want to make sure that over the past two months, you haven't seen any uptick, you know, since we talked to you last. No, there's still not been an uptick in crime, nor DWIs, nor overindulgence. So, you know, it's of our opinion that what you decide is what you decide. We're not against it, we're not necessarily for it. We're just giving you the facts, you know, of what we've investigated, what we've seen and where we're at. So, do you have any questions for me on the PD side? Yes, ma'am.
I do. Can you just talk to, because I know the town has a very robust program for people who sell alcohol, that you do training and education. Can you, can you speak about that or the liability aspect of the person who's served? Or if there would be an issue if somebody was over-served?
Yes, ma'am. And as a matter of fact, we just taught a class today. We had a North Carolina ALE came down today and, and held a class for Dream Chasers and the Tap House. And they held that class today because they're thinking about doing mixed beverage. So anytime a drinking establishment either establishes their ABC permit or they're thinking about upping that to mixed beverage, we have ALE come in and do a class, we have our Waksaw PD, ABC officers are present as well for any questions they may have for local ordinances or local laws here. So, but during that class, they teach every employee for the establishments about what they can do, what they can't do, over-serving, what signs to look for, trying to make conversation with those patrons when they come in prior to serving them. There's a lot of times people will come in, and, and I covered this today with the North Carolina ALE, because I said, look, if somebody leaves establishment A and they've drank six mixed drinks, then they walk to establishment B. When they get in there, they walk to the bar and say, give me a Bud Light. And that's all they say. Can you tell from that whether that person's intoxicated? No. So unless they have the red glassy eyes, the slurred speech, unstated on their feet, something. And that's why North Carolina ALE stressed so much that all the servers, the, the greeters, the bartenders, everybody's got to talk. It is a, it is a team thing to where all of those people have to talk. If somebody comes in and they're loud and boisterous, are you going to look at them a little further? Absolutely. So, and that's something that those bartenders are looking for is people who come in who are a little over the top already. They know that they've probably been served too much somewhere else. Now, having a social district, is that going to change person going from establishment A to establishment B to get another drink? No, we're already seeing it. We're already seeing people leave Maxwell's at ten, ten-thirty because they close, where do they go? They're going to go to the next establishment that's open to have another drink. So the establishments that stay open later are the ones that really have to worry about and they've got the greatest liability of those people overindulging somewhere else and then coming to their establishment and having more drinks. So, and it doesn't matter if you have one drink at that establishment and you leave there and you get in a fatality wreck down at sixteen in Newtown. You have one drink at the last establishment you're at, well, are they liable? Could they be liable? Absolutely. It's extremely hard to prove, but at the same time, they could be liable after serving one drink. And all these establishments know that. I also spoke to North Carolina ALE today about the downtown Waksaw area, our footprint. We showed them the footprint for the social district. And according to North Carolina ALE, Waksaw's the perfect footprint for a district. Now she did say there are other districts out there in North Carolina that are not perfect for this. One of those, I'm not going to mention any names, but it's a bigger town with a lot larger footprint and it just doesn't work. But with our smaller footprint is the perfect area for this type of social district. Does it increase foot traffic for businesses? We can't say that. I can't tell you it does because we tested this during events. Events are going to have more traffic, more foot traffic anyway. I can tell you that I came, I worked both events. I worked the TAP event for the opening for their Dream Chasers and Cork and Ale. And there was a lot more foot traffic inside of those shopping establishments. I can't tell you I worked Autumn Treasures and my, I worked in capacity while my wife drug me around by my hand, going to every business downtown that she had to buy something from. So thank you so much. But every business we went into were extremely receptive. They all were like, oh my God, I can't tell you enough that the amount of business we've had over Saturday and Sunday is just crazy compared to what we had last year at Autumn Treasures. So it was comparing apples to apples. They gave me their feedback that day of, it's been great, so.
I'll note too that with ABC training each year in the spring, we do host a training with PD and ALE just ahead of the busy season, just to get all of the downtown businesses and employees kind of refreshed on what the guidelines are. And really from those trainings where we've talked a lot about over-serving and how to recognize when, when someone has had too much, that was really where a lot of our downtown businesses said, to protect my own liability, I need to put cameras in my bar. I need to be able to prove if, if I can, if I over-served someone or not or if I was able to tell if this person was intoxicated or not.
Any more questions?
I just have one. So what if the person comes into the establishment? No, does not come into the establishment. But that person has gone from establishment A to establishment B to establishment C. Now, in all likelihood, they may in fact be intoxicated, but they don't go into establishment D. Someone else goes into establishment D. Who assesses their intoxication?
Are you talking about the person that's outside?
The person that's outside is the one who's intoxicated. But somebody else goes into establishment D for the person who's outside.
Right, gets them a drink and then brings it back out.
Exactly. So how are we, we're not?
We can't.
Can't, okay?
And the business wouldn't be liable at that point because?
Which business?
There's any of them.
So where does the liability, so where then does the liability fall? If in fact that person is intoxicated and then something happens to that person on the street?
Right, so, so we'd have to go through and do our investigation. So we'd have to find out the last business that they attended, wherever they were last at, and then go back from there. Which would be the same as if they went in establishment D and bought the drink. We'd still go back to the other establishments.
And it's the same process that we currently have for that, for that now.
Okay, so we've tested it on, on two events, you stated, right? And we cannot, you know, say what the foot traffic would be without an event. So are we in fact going to test it without an event?
I think that, I think that our, our recommendation would be to test it at, to just do it officially, at a normal time, on a normal, normal date. The issue with testing it and not making it permanent is that it's going to be confusing. So I would recommend not necessarily testing it, but just, just kicking it off and doing it. We could set up a kind of test timeframe and say for the next two or three months, we will, we will test it. That way it doesn't get confusing and then, you know, a month before, we can kind of reevaluate at that point. But I think that would give us more data too.
So then why not do the data, test the data during that timeframe?
Yeah.
Without going directly into just establishing it as a district?
Yeah, we, and we would still have to establish the district to go through that.
But it would only be at a small timeframe?
Yes, we could do that.
But what you're requesting now is just for us to establish the district totally?
Yep, but that's, I mean, that's completely up to you. If you guys do want to do a test timeframe, we could do that.
What's the timeframe you're thinking of?
I'm saying, I mean, just to see what, you, you've only tested it during events. So we don't know what the uptake is going to be in foot traffic or in profit to the businesses. Is that correct?
Correct.
You know, so why is it not being tested again? I have another question. Got a few questions here. We had a business owner who spoke earlier. He had signs, you know, notices for people not to come into the business. People still came into his establishment. How do you now prevent that from happening to other business owners who do not want people coming into their establishments?
Yeah, I think that the biggest thing for that would be education for the public. Because we've only tested it at two events, we really need that big public education campaign to make sure that people are, are looking for those signs when they're entering businesses.
So you need to test it again, I'm understanding, without an event? That's what I'm hearing. Without it going into a full social district permanency? Okay, now with the, with the number of business owners who you say are in favor of the social district, there are some who are not, okay? What type of feedback are you getting from them if they do not want people coming into their establishments?
Yeah, as of now, I have gotten emails from just two businesses that are not supportive of it. And, or gotten feedback on that survey to say they wouldn't want alcohol in their business. But as of now, I've only gotten two from all of our businesses that have said they're not supportive.
And when we do our surveys as well, you've done surveys when we've had the events, are you also putting a survey out there just for the general population to see what their feeling is for this social district? And if so, where is that, that they can give you that information?
Yeah, the survey is on our, on the website, so it's waksaw.com/social-district. And there, that led, there was a QR code on all of our labels, signage and sandwich boards that led to that website.
I know you had something.
I do.
You all do.
The only question, what I wanted to ask you is when this was tested, can somebody buy two drinks at a time or is there a limit that it can only one drink at a time?
It, it depends, correct?
So, so North Carolina law, you can only buy two drinks at one time? So you could buy two beers or you could buy a beer and a shot? So that, that's it?
So the scenario that?
So it's no different whether it's a social district or not, it doesn't matter, you can only get?
So like your, your, your scenario that you posed, somebody could go in and potentially get two drinks and come outside and give it to their friend?
I just have, I know you spoke with the Monroe police officers. So some of the comments we've heard is that people are vomiting, people are urinating. I've heard comments about Monroe saying, oh, people are just drunk in the streets, it's a mess, you know? I'm assuming first of all that some of that happens regardless if there's a social district, right? I mean, you haven't heard that there's been an increase of that type of behavior in Monroe social district?
When I spoke to Monroe, they didn't, they didn't speak to any of that. They said they're not having any issues.
And then my second question? And then my second question would be the time. So what times were you proposing, you said 11 to nine? And when you compare to some of the other, the forty other towns that are doing this, what are the times that they're doing it?
Yeah, so we're proposing 11 to nine. Ideally because that catches both the bars and restaurants as well as the retail businesses. And we know this is going to be a, a big benefit for the retail shops that participate in it. And so we want to make sure that they're able to capitalize on that. So it's really kind of all on, all over the board. This is really consistent with other places. I did look at Monroe's and theirs is actually Monday through Saturday from 8:00 AM to 12:00 AM. And then Sunday from 10:00 AM to 12:00 AM. Then Salisbury is from 12:00 PM to 12:00 AM. Statesville is 12 to 10:00 PM. And then Albemarle is 10:00 AM to 10:00 PM. So it's, it really depends on the community. I thought that 11:00 AM to 9:00 PM worked well for Waxaw.
Are any for just, do any just have it on the weekends or they all do all week long?
So I'm, I'm compiling a lot of data now. We had one of our main street communities put together a spreadsheet with all forty-six, all forty-six social districts. There is one I found today that is Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. So this is actually in Ashboro. So theirs is Thursday, Friday, and Saturday from 11:00 AM to 11:00 PM.
So Dex, would that make it confusing though again if we just limited it to weekends?
I don't, I mean, I don't know. I know it's very confusing when you go from one weekend to the next weekend. You're having it this weekend and not having it that next, that next weekend, but I mean, we'd have to really, we'd have to see. I know that the major call volume we get is mostly from the side where Dream Chasers is. Where a lot of people are walking out of those bars with drinks on that side. And I think that primarily comes back to where we had the events where you could be in the street and have alcohol for years. You know, when they, going back to events years ago. And then now you're looking at it as now we're a social district only during these times. So it's bringing it right back again and it's just an educational, educational thing for the people. So we went from ticketing people approximately four years ago. We were ticketing everybody who left drinking establishments, you know, because the education process was done. It was, hey, you can't have this alcohol on sidewalks. I'm sorry, it's a North Carolina law. Here's your ticket. To now, we're back to the educational piece again because we're back and forth. And I don't like myself, I wouldn't like it if my wife went to Ashboro and they had a social district one weekend and not the next. And she went into a bar and walked out on the sidewalk with a beer and she came home with a ticket. Like, whoa, 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 wait a minute, why would you do that? I'm the chief of police, you can't do that. Don't bring a ticket home to me. Well, would she be wrong? You know, if, if last weekend she could do it, but then all of a sudden this weekend she can't? I, I can't blame her for that. I have to blame Ashboro for that. Kind of like I'd blame Waxaw for if my officers went out and ticketed everybody walking out of a bar the next weekend. Okay, hey, this is our fault. It's in their fault. This, this is back to education. Pedro.
For both the, the, the events, Autumn Treasures and the, the opening, were there any DUIs?
I know there was one DUI during Autumn Treasures. And I don't know whether that DUI came from the downtown area. I'd have to do some research with the officer that did that DUI. But there was one.
Okay. Ashley, you said you had spoken to businesses. There was some sort of surveys, some feedback. Do you have a list compiled of all the businesses and their reactions and?
Not in a spreadsheet, but we could do that.
Okay, if, if you could, I'd like a list of all the businesses that you spoke to. Positive, negative, opting out, you didn't reach them because their emails were wrong, their phone numbers were wrong, they're upstairs, downstairs, either way. I, I know it's a lot, but if you could please, Chief, is, is there a way, and you mentioned a few other towns besides Monroe? Could you reach out to, however many of these towns? And get feedback as far as issues, things of that nature from a much wider spread of towns and populations and crime densities to get a better idea?
Yes, I'll definitely do that. So the, the major reason I've reached out to Monroe to begin with is because they're so close in proximity to us, but I'll definitely reach out to all of them.
If you could please, thank you.
All right, Anne.
So Ashley, I know we came up with like an outdoor dining. I don't know if it was an ordinance, but is there a way to maybe incorporate that with ABC permities? Like if they wanted to have like a certain little area in front of their business or their sidewalk that they, they could, they could do that, which maybe, maybe not be an entire social district per se?
Yeah, so right now, our ABC permities downtown on North and South Main can apply for a soc, or apply for a sidewalk dining permit. And that allows them to have alcohol in a, in that, on that sidewalk area in approved, in, in kind of an approved map. We do have to look at their tables and then any barricades that they have. But it, it does allow for them to have alcohol in that area. We do require a five-foot walkway around, around that area. So it's easier for pedestrians.
So that could be an alternative to something that's as widespread?
Yeah, it, yeah, it definitely allows for alcohol to be on the sidewalks.
So would that assist? You would have to have barricades around those areas. You can't cross.
So would that assist say with Dream Chasers and the tickets that you say that you've had to give out? If they had that ability to do that on the outside with their customers?
Yeah, so Dream Chasers does have that ability. What we're seeing with that corner, the biggest issue are those aderent chairs. So we have made a really inviting and welcoming area on East North Main. And I, our customers aren't realizing that they can sit there. So I think that if we were just to go with a sidewalk dining permit, those chairs would just need to be removed. And that's not an area that we would want to let, to let a business have, be able to take over. It should be public space, so.
We would also have to remove those tables with the umbrellas, same issue.
So, and those are the two primary areas that we're seeing problems. Aderent chairs and those tables. So I think it was Neil that actually put the signage on the aderent chairs that was really gaudy. So it was really gaudy, it was really ugly, but it was the best thing in the world for me. Because it stopped us from getting calls in reference to people sitting in those chairs with alcoholic beverages. So while it was ugly, it worked. It was very efficient.
But I think that, you know, long-term, removing those would be an option if, if we weren't to do a social district.
All right, any other thoughts, comments around there, Jason?
Yeah, I, I had to, but Anne just stole one of mine, but that's good. It's, I think it's an interesting option. I did have a, a use case that I just wanted to throw out there and maybe even Neil could help answer it. And I'm only picking on him because he bothered to show up. But the use case I'm thinking of is that, so when I was younger, I was a certified bartender and my wife worked in the service industry. When you're working in this industry, you, you work on tips. And so if, if I'm tending bar and somebody comes in with a drink from another bar and sits down and consumes a seat and isn't ordering, then that might be counterproductive to us encouraging revenue being generated. So how would, how would a restaurant handle, propose to handle that?
Neil, do you want to answer that from the restaurant perspective? I do know we have some restaurants who have said they wouldn't allow outside beverages to come in for that reason. They don't want someone taking up a seat. Neil has said he would allow outside beverages, so he's a really good one to help answer.
Right now, we don't let any outside beverages in as far as that difference, so because that will impact our license. If we have a social district, most of the, most of the people are outside drinking. They're not really coming in. Doesn't impact our ability to sell to anybody who wants to come in. It's just basically somebody sitting at a table. We do, right now, we have to deal with, right now, where people go to come in with food from other places and sit down at our tables neat. So it happens.
All right, thanks for that, Neil.
If I could chime in like, Neil could stop outside alcohol from coming in. So if, if say you were owner of a bar A, or restaurant A, and you didn't want people to bring their own alcohol in from other bars, you could restrict that. So Ashley has the signage that you would put on the door that would say no outside alcohol.
Okay, then, then people are just drinking in the streets then, right, basically?
Well, I mean, they could still go into your bar and order drinks, food, and whatever they want. They could stay in your bar. Or you could have, you could be part of the social district and allow them to purchase inside your restaurant. And they could walk out with it. They just can't go into another one. It doesn't allow it.
Right, that's my point, exactly.
Right.
Right, so, I mean, you can participate in the social district, but then not allow
Outside.
Outside beverages
Right.
Into your establishment.
Yep, that would be up to you as the owner.
And so that's how you as the business owner would combat somebody consuming a seat, basically, at, at your bar with, with outside beverages? I got you.
How do you still then assist the establishment who doesn't want anyone to come in and they're not following the signage? So what then happens?
They, they would call us. So if, if somebody came into your establishment and you didn't allow outside drinks and you told them to leave and they don't leave, at that point they're trespassing. So once you tell them to leave, they, they don't leave, then they're trespassing. Obviously, that needs a little bit of work on it. So just if you could, supply all the information that everybody's asked you. You decide on the timing and let everybody know, you know, when you'll have that kind of information back to them. And then until that feedback is digested a little bit, we'll decide how we take the next step. I appreciate it. Thank you for being patient, Chief. Thank you as well. Neil, thank you as well for participating as well. All right, with that, we're going to, there's nothing on closed session tonight. Town leadership reports, Jeffrey, be quick.
I have nothing.
Smart guy. Ashley, sit down. No, I'm only kidding. Anything else that you want to bring forward? She disappeared. There she is.
I like talking. I did want to provide you guys an update for the Downtown Waxaw Association. We submitted our first tax return. So we had to file our FY 23-990. So we submitted that last week. Right now, that, that board is working on hearing fundraising goals and, and ideas. We have a lot of holiday events coming up in downtown. So we have thirty-five businesses that have signed on for our downtown holiday wreath promotion. So these businesses get a wreath and then they decorate that somehow to represent their business. My favorite last year was Palmetto Family Hearing. They put hearing aids and ears on their wreath and it was really cute. So stay tuned to our Facebook page, Downtown Waxaw for that. Those will be displayed on Thursday. They'll be up for the lighting on Saturday. We'll post those pictures on Facebook this weekend. Light Up Waxaw is on Saturday. That is when we'll turn our holiday lights on. I'm sure Dina will talk about the Touch a Truck event. The lights will come on at six on Saturday. And then next week, it'll be a really good time for you to take your family downtown because the lights will be on. So if you need family holiday photos, go next week. Also next week, we have Black Friday and Small Business Saturday. Those are November twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth. These are some of the biggest shopping days of the year for small businesses, especially for those in downtowns. So we're, we're really looking forward to like a big kickoff for the holiday season. So I challenge everyone to shop local. I, last year, offered my personal shopping services to anyone who needed help finding gifts. So if you need some help, let me know. I will go shopping with you downtown, so.
She's dangerous.
Yeah, it's just my reminder, shop local this season.
All right, thank you. Appreciate that. Ms. Dina?
Hello all. I, I will be quick and easy about this. We have programs coming up. Hero is at Harrison Park tomorrow. Senior Coffee Bingo is this Thursday. Always love bingo. Inclusive adult programming we have coming up in November, the twenty-seventh and the thirtieth. And that is edible art and yoga. So we are moving forward with meeting the needs of our citizens of Waxaw. Again, this weekend is a busy weekend for downtown. We have the Ginger Five K Race. So we have lots of little girls in our downtown area, bright and early on Saturday morning. So be aware of that. Also Touch Truck, as this Ashley gave you a heads up on, that is from one to four. We have a sensory hour, hour between one and two. So that means everybody's calm and easy, so everybody can come and play. And then we have Help Out with Downtown Lighting. The next event up would be the Christmas Parade and that is Sunday, the tenth, from three to five. And we have shuttles available for that as well. And we have for the lighting, we have shuttles available for that as well. So you have an easy time coming down, have fun with us, and we'll get you back home safe. Any questions?
We've given us the handouts, so.
I, you've got the handouts in front of you. And please go to the town website, the town Facebook page, and the Parking Rec Facebook page. And it has all the details of where the shuttle drop-offs are and all the times and starts.
Excellent.
Senior Christmas party is what?
Senior Christmas party is on the second of December. And we are full at this time, but there's a waiting list. And we are partnering up with Forest Hills Church. Thank you.
Instead of the Waxaw Bible Church, because they're under construction.
They are, but they've been great partners and we're grateful for, for them letting us use the space.
All right, very good. Any thoughts, questions? All right.
All right, thank you.
Move on. All right, Mr. Todd?
Parks and rec finished, so public services is up. I'm getting too old for these late meetings. I want to touch on the CSX crossing, thanks to Keith Robinson. We were out loading asphalt because they only had one truck running asphalt. And we had to take the old asphalt away. We had a little six fifty dump truck. Keith come by and hauled two loads for us and didn't recharge us for it, so I want to get a shout out to him. The boardwalk in the park is finished. I'd like for y'all to go down and look at the handiwork my public service guys did. They did an awesome job on it. The offsite's all done. Got a little bit of cleanup to do. The athletic barn, the pavement's all done. We don't strike that Friday. The walking trails in Prescott is all done. Y'all can check it out. It's pretty awesome too. It's nine foot wide. It's, it's real nice. And we started leaf season last Monday. We're in day six, the day was day six. We did forty-three loads already. It's nine hundred and twenty-two cubic yards. That's a lot of leaves. It just about filled up this room in there. Them guys have been getting it, so a lot of dust and everything. But we're working on our hearts. We already went through the whole town one time and we started over again, so. We get, we don't, we get, that's all we got.
All right, any questions? Thanks, Todd. Appreciate that. Yeah, it is going to be a lot of work, a little bit of concerted effort there. But I'm sure the new, the new equipment helps out a little bit, gets it done a little quicker. All right, Board of Commissioners, if you say anything.
I think Brenda covered it for us.
All right, so we're looking for any comments?
Motion to adjourn?
There you go, you start right up. Motion's up, all in favor?
All right.
All right, we are adjourned. All right, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.